This is the work session of March 21st of Bel Air Beach Council. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States Constitution, to the republic for which it stands, one hundred and one hundred and fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three.
Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to turn this on. Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Now, clerk.
Councilmember Robinaki.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swoe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
Finance Officer Melanie Cruzona.
Here.
And Councilmember Jody Shirley has not yet arrived.
Thank you. What we're going to do tonight is we thought it would be very helpful to just introduce the new council members and the returning council members, along with the citizens, to some of the committees that we have that work in the city. Some people are familiar with them, some people have even served on those committees, other people have probably never been to one of their meetings. So, we ask that each person come and make a brief presentation to the council, and if there's any questions, we will ask them from the council. One point of order, we have in the past had situations where people in the audience want to ask questions, and it's not a regular part of this meeting. We actually need the council to approve that first, and then I have to recognize that person. So, I'm not going to do that each and every single time to ask for a vote, so I'm going to ask for a vote up front. If there are questions and I recognize the person, do we have affirmation of the council that I can select people from the audience to ask questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any nays? So, I will, at my discretion, do that. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to do it, I'm going to wait until the people finish speaking. I will watch out in the audience, and if I forget, please somebody up here just remind me, and I will have a point where you can do that. Just stand up, I will recognize you, and then ask the question. After that question's finished, next person stands up. That's the way. You don't have to keep waving, because I think that's distracting to the people up here. And, yeah, they have to come to the podium, I'm sorry, and name and address, the same routine that we follow in our regular council sessions. So, with that, first, we have the Board of Adjustment. Someone's here from the Board of Adjustment?
Two.
Two people. Okay, so we have a dual presentation. Martha Vasquez.
I have a little more voice for that. I've distributed two pages. The first page is basically what I wanted to say. Mike is here as a voice, he's served on it before, and he's supposed to share now some of his thoughts and questions.
Mayor Kelly. Thank you.
I'm Mike Kelly, 2740 Hibiscus Drive West, Vice Chairman of the Board, with a voice. Council members, congratulations on all of you. Martha, I guess, has presented you with some information that she would like you to know about. I will give you an overview in much more amended form, so to speak, and I'll give you an update on where the Board of Adjustment is right now. Everybody knows the Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board, so we, on behalf of the city, are making legal decisions that are not only final, in other words, it doesn't come before council. They are final decisions, but they, we're making it on behalf of the municipality to the point where if anybody who doesn't like the Board of Adjustment's decisions, they have to go through the judicial court system, Circuit Court, I believe, Lynn, isn't it? If they wanted to fight, like, have a particular case. The Board of Adjustment is a seven-member board, as you know, and for several years, the attendance on the board, the membership of the board was such that a special magistrate had to take its place. You still have that on your books, correct? In the absence of a quorum, if the city manager, or if the mayor, or whomever has the authority wishes to use a special magistrate instead of the Board of Adjustment, you have that right. Fortunately, since the Board of Adjustment was reappointed again after the code revision was over in October, they do have a full board. There's seven city members and two alternates, as Rita knows. We had a couple alternates, and we've needed alternates. And we've had four meetings. Dave's had a case, Jody's husband had a case. We've had, in the last five months, we've had four Board of Adjustment meetings. It's wonderful that we have a full board. Citizens have come, and you've learned a lot, not only as an applicant, but as an observer, and now you get to see what the Board of Adjustment continues to do. I will say that that's been the key, that you must have a quorum, because in many cases, if you've only got four members, it's mandatory that the vote by the Board of Adjustment must be unanimous. And that's not fair to the residents, it's not fair to the applicant. In many cases in the past, where I've served, and we've suddenly only had four, Patty tells us at 4:30, we've only got four members coming, and applicants bring lawyers and/or spokespersons. Dave came with people, his doc guy. That's not fair to these people, have to show up and know that a three-to-one vote is a defeat. It's just not fair at all. What the Board of Adjustment has heard lately is dock variances, typole variances. The one we had two months ago was somebody who wanted to change the front setbacks on the corner of 25th, as you know, and Hibiscus. It just doesn't happen in the city, on new construction, that the Board of Adjustment is going to blanketly grant something where there's no hardship and there's no special conditions, and those are the criteria for Board of Adjustment applicants. For those of you that have been to meetings, you'll notice that we have to go through a criteria of six questions. It's mandatory that all six of those questions, well, let's put this way, those six questions all start with the phrase, "The applicant must demonstrate," and then there's six things they must do. You must get yes votes on those criteria. If not, any one of them could stop. And about, oh, I think it was June or July, when the last time you had the special magistrate here, there was a case on Tiffany, and she asked the applicant the first of six criteria questions, and it was a no answer, and she said, "This hearing is over." The applicant was standing here and was kind of shocked that it's over, that he didn't qualify for those yes answers on six questions. Dave's seen them, but they're tough, and they relate to the actual case in point, whether or not there is a unique circumstance or special conditions that you think that you can demonstrate that you deserve a variance. At this point, I'm taking any questions from you folks.
Kelly, I just wanted to add one thing, and it was very informative, if you ever have a chance to see this, see this whole process, but one thing that stood out, because people ask all the time, "Can I get a variance for that?" If you just, and one of the things that sticks out in my mind is that it has to be a condition that you did not create.
That is absolutely true.
We added, just at a hearing this week, there was a code hearing, and there was a suggestion, I think by the special magistrate, perhaps you can get a variance, but when you plant a bush or a tree, and that's what ultimately causes the alleged problem, I don't think there's any prayer of getting a variance.
That's right. In the application itself, and the six questions are in the application, and it's verbatim, just like you said, "The applicant must demonstrate," but there's a phrase in here that's critical, that we stress to the applicant, that says, "That the circumstance, unique circumstance, will not result from the intentional act of the applicant or the applicant's agent." The gentleman on 25th and Hibiscus, that was an intentional act on his part to want to move his house up. Can we stop anybody from applying for variance? Absolutely not. How many times can you say, or Patty can say, if they say, "Well, what's my chances?" They don't know. You don't know. You want to throw your $500, which is covering a tremendous amount of costs, and wasting a whole lot of time, you can't prevent the applicant from doing that. The fee used to be 300. Lynn, at some point, it moved to 500, and even that was a deterrent, but the due process has to be followed. And any action that's wrong on the process of the Board of Adjustment can bring civil action if someone so chooses. That's why we're very protective of the procedures of Board of Adjustment.
Are the terms, you said they were reappointed with the code, with the code revision, are the terms, the seven members all serving the same three-year term, or is it a staggered term?
They're staggered. I think they're staggered. I think Dave, I've got two years left of a three-year term. Because I, I'm sorry, Lynn?
Mayor, they're staggered.
They are?
Yeah. And we had members, but we didn't have a full board, we went out and sought members, and I think now we're in pretty good shape, because we still have the option with the magistrate if we can't get a quorum, but we don't really want to do that, because it costs the resident another $500, because that magistrate's going to charge us $150 an hour plus.
One of the things that I've noticed as a buyer, recent buyer, but also other recent buyers that I've spoken with, is that they really don't know what they're getting into whenever they decide to buy a home here. And it might not be a bad idea for us to get together, brainstorm, and just figure out some way to sort of warn new potential homeowners. And so, whenever the process begins, I'm sure that there's somehow or another, there's got to be some way to know that new ownership may possibly happen, and that maybe there's a pre-welcome packet that we can get to these potential buyers that says, "Hey, by the way, if you, you know, here's kind of what your land looks like, and here's what you're up against if you want to change anything." And, you know, I don't want to spend a whole lot of money or time on it, but at the same time, there should be a very distinct warning that if you're coming to Bel Air Beach, this isn't no holds barred, and no matter what your real estate agent says, you're going to have to look at our code before you want to change anything.
I think that's a very excellent point, and, you know, I know, speaking with Mr. Kelly, you know, I don't think, you've been doing this, what, 12 years or so? When you're trying to remove setbacks and things like that, it's just something that typically is not going to happen, and so, something like that, Mr. Gaddis, that, you know, I think, you know, we basically would say, "If this is what we're thinking," I mean, it's possible, but trying to go through that six set of questions is going to be brutally tough for you.
That's right. And that's the thing, is they're not going to know, but at least if they're given possibly a reference to our code system, look through it before you buy this. Buyer beware. It's not that, I don't want anybody buying this property, but it's hard.
There's a couple other points to follow, exactly what Dave's talking about. The applicants that come before the Board of Adjustment, in many cases, take the position of, "I didn't know I couldn't do this," whether it's a pool, or whether it's a dock, or whether it's typos, or whether it's setbacks. Somebody tends to blame someone. They tend to blame the realtor, blame the architect, blame someone for which they think we are due for a variance, before the hardship is created, before the special condition is mentioned. It's not the city's responsibility to stretch your property or make it work, and in a polite way, that's a message that you just elaborated on, that has to be shown and said at a Board of Adjustment meeting. Welcome to our city, but this is, these are our rules. So...
I think that's a good point, and it's a fine line, too, because you don't want to put the city in a position where they can come back and point the finger and say, "Well, you told me this, but you didn't tell me that." Nothing aggregates that person from doing their due diligence and their responsibility.
Or I lost the sale of my house because the city getting involved in telling a new homeowner, you know, there's unseen, you know, circumstances get involved in those sorts of things. And this is not unique to Bel Air Beach. Every city has code they have to follow, and, I mean, if you're developing or changing your structure, it's, you're going to face it, whether it's Bel Air Beach, whether it's Clearwater, whether it's Longwood, Florida, you know, it doesn't matter.
I think realtors, for one, know about this, and the other thing is your title companies know about it, and if there are code restrictions, your deed restrictions, a restriction, they should pass it on. Recently, I discovered a deed restriction for Bel Air Beach, and it's amazing. I wasn't given that information, but my neighbor was giving it to him when he bought his house four years before me, and there was a lot of information in there, including a map of the area, and it seems to be still intact, so it was something that was buried years ago, and it just never came forward. Not even a title search.
Well, as in my profession, I'm a Realtor, and we give advice to all of our buyers, no matter what area they're looking in, to check the website. We can't give them any legal advice whatsoever, nor even implicate that they can't get a variance, because maybe they can, but with that said, giving them a pre-welcome package, how many of those are you going to hand out to? Everybody that even thinks about it, because there's a line there, too. We always direct them to the city's website as realtors, and we also direct them to the city manager or the city clerk, that they can call for any other information. I mean, you know, they're looking for someone to blame, and that's where they're going to go.
Really, you're right. They do blame someone.
Exactly.
And they're going to blame, and Patty, her answer tied, Lindsey's answer tied, all we can do is legally give them a history of whether or not a variance, like you're asking for, has ever been granted in this city. The front setbacks, it doesn't happen, and the neighborhood residents that showed up at that meeting, they were here in force to say, "Wait a minute, we all comply with these codes, why shouldn't they?" The mayor asked me an interesting question, as one of the criteria of the six that we go through can be ambiguous, but it's like saying, "Well, we have the same lot, but you and Dave have the same lot, and what he can have, you should be able to have," and that's one of the questions we get. It's tough to get a variance in Bel Air Beach, period, and we even tried, as a city, to change some setbacks to minimize the variance request at all. The Board of Adjustment meets as needed, doesn't meet monthly, but we changed setbacks on seawalls for pools, we changed, with Dave's help, we changed, code revision changed, changed setbacks on high-shape lots. So, the more the council does to approve your ordinances, the fewer cases the Board of Adjustment sees. Go here. I guess I'm done.
Ms. Vasquez has a question.
Just going to also speak up for realtors, since I am one. I would be happy to work on one-page document of whatever, just FYI, in Bel Air Beach. When I know a Realtor that's going to be listing in Bel Air Beach, and I see something in there, I'm like, "You can rather have this little section here." I make sure they understand, "No, you can't," but in Bel Air Beach, but you're never going to get every Realtor, you're never going to get every buyer, but it wouldn't hurt that if you're interested, and we'd like to come up with something that distributes to Realtors' offices.
I think also, we have the history, at least some history, on the website of the minutes from these meetings, maybe it's just a matter of, maybe you've been expanding that beyond, I think we just typically keep about a year there. Wouldn't be difficult to have a little bit more history. In that situation, you can point a person and say, "Listen, here's a five-year history of everything they've met on," they can make their own decision, and then no one's given legal advice, but you can pretty much go there and see if a similar application has ever been approved, to get an idea where you stand.
The mayor, we do have a welcome packet, that if someone comes in and asks for it, we do have that. It may not have everything about the code, but it's got a lot of information.
The most frustrating case I've had is a pool guy installed a pool, which did not comply, and then he came in and asked for a variance, but it's a rest in Bel Air Beach. So, you can't stop them from coming.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Maybe this is more appropriate at the Realtor level than the city level, I mean, it's part of the education process, and if you're representing the buyers and sellers, hold their hand, rather than put us in a position where it's the city's responsibility to educate and walk them through their due diligence.
Well, in their defense, and I'm not saying this is good or bad, but if you've got a car with a bad engine, but right now, there's no signs of, are you going to let them know before you sell it, especially if you don't know them, you know what I'm saying? It's like, not everybody is as honest as Rita or Paul, but you see what I'm saying.
Well, and that's the point I'm trying to make, is it's a ethical kind of thing for the Realtors, right?
Right.
And there is a code of ethics that they have to agree to, and, you know, I think the city can't be, has to be cautious not to be held responsible. The information is there, we need codes, has everything we need to know about our code online. You can look it up, it's got a great search opportunity for, if you're looking for specific information, but I, you know, I think the city needs to be cautious about providing information, other than what the facts are.
I think the bottom line is, not so much you're able to, my wife's realtor also, she's dealt with this stuff before, but when they do a title search, and the lawyer's handling the paperwork, they should be the ones that are fully responsible for any of the information that's not passed on to the buyer. That's what you pay them, paying them to protect you.
That's what you buy title insurance for, go back to the title insurance company.
The next, folks, we have someone from Parks and Recreation, Alan Mintz.
Councilmembers and others, thank you for being here. This will be a brief history of Parks and Recreation. I've kind of divided it into two areas, the tangible areas, which are the parks. I think we have almost 20 different parks in the city. The ones that we're most interested in are the ones, well, we're interested in them all, but the most important ones are the ones on the golf that we use under a legal agreement with Bel Air Shores. That's something that's very important to us, and I believe as a Realtor, people realize that when prospective homeowners are coming into the community, that's probably one of the things that they are really interested in, is that access to that park. It's a very valuable, very valuable property that we share with Bel Air Shores, and we're always concerned about our relation with Bel Air Shores, because there have been periods when they haven't been good. That could be another statement. There are periods right now where they've never been better, and that singled out the Bel Air Beach a few months ago, through the work of our city manager Lynn Reeves, and the counterparts of Bel Air Shores. We were given praise that we were keeping the parks and the general cooperation that we're receiving. That's very important, and that's one of the things we concentrate on in our meetings. We're also looking at ways to always make our parks that are on the intercoastal correct in terms of how they look, how they're landscaped, that people are using a property, and that needs almost constant work. But I think it will pay off in terms of maintaining the image of the community that prospective homeowners and current homeowners expect. The more recent activity is to define better the intercoastal walkways that we have, and that's a project that through Mr. Reeves, we've started, and just going up and down from the case of Second Street all the way down to Ninth Street, there's some confusion at some different points in terms of what's a private residence property and what's the intercoastal walkway. And one of the things we're going to be talking about in the future is to identify better where the walkway is, and make sure that homeowners whose property is above the walkway are respecting the individual property, the walk in the property itself. Independently, with the review of that, I kind of counted how many people go by back at my house, which I could see, and there's probably, given the day, anywhere from 12 to more people, a lot of them are kids, a lot of them are dogs, and I've kind of walked that second to Ninth Street as exercise, just to see what it looks like, and I'm really impressed with the way that people have picked up for the dogs, the cleanliness that's evident there, which wasn't always the case, is back, and I think we're moving in the right direction by focusing on that opportunity to do it. The second part of the Parks and Recreation are activities for the homeowners, and we've had a long list. I should just add that my family moved here in 1978, and we bought there. My wife and I bought the house in 1987, so we have a long history of what life is like in Bel Air Beach, and we've lived through and enjoyed a lot of activities, from Christmas parties that we had, to New Year's Eve parties, which were nicely run, but there never was an ability to generate enough interest in the community to make these activities affordable, because we have to hire and pay overtime to the staff to do them, and it just doesn't, it never seemed to work out. I can't think of one activity that we tried, including we had Audubon, it's very interesting, we had the Audubon Society come in and look at the community to see if there could be some relationship because of the obvious bird population we have here. The Audubon peoples, two groups came, and they said it was probably one of the best examples of a bird sanctuary in the country, because of, you could see so many birds, and such a, the way that they live, you know, communicate, and also are treated within the community. So, we tried to build on that relationship by having the Audubon Society provide walks to the homeowners. I think we had one effort, and we only got two or three people, and that was a lot of the difference, because in fact, that summer's the best time to do that, but that's when the weather to take walks is not the best, so we tried, no success there. So, we're certainly welcoming to more suggestions. I know we have each party that can work out either because of the weather or the lack of participation. So, that's basically the summary of what we do, and we also respond, working together with Lynn Reeves, on the different opportunities for the city to acquire funding, and we've got several issues right now that we're going through, and we'll make recommendations to the board as it's helping. So, I think I'd like to also vouch that we've got Scott County here from the committee, and Scott's been a welcome addition. We've never had a lot of members, which is always another issue. We also have, I've got to say this, I've been on the committee for over 10 years, and we had a period when, we knew we had great cooperation from the city, that was prior to Lynn, but under, it wasn't the city manager, it was employee, kind of took over the responsibility for the committee and made sure nothing ever happened, and that was pretty disappointing. That is history, and now I think we're in a much better position to go forward. So, I can ask any questions, if anybody can answer here?
I do have a question, or maybe it's a challenge. I went around to just about every resident of the city in my campaign, and we have beautiful parks, I acknowledge that, other than Marina, which we're going to work on, our parks are beautiful, but what's missing here is we don't have community, it's community center. There's nothing here. We have very few activities. We do have a few, Garden Club, I think, meets here, they do a fine job, we invite people from there, but we don't have a lot of activities. And I know you said in the past, and I acknowledge that, that in the past, I think you've tried these things, and no one responded. In the past, we used to get 200 people for election. We just got 608 people coming out, 40% of our electorate. I sense, and I think the other candidates do, too, a change in Bel Air Beach here. I think people are very much more interested in our city, and I think they would like to have this. I've heard this, and it's not anecdotal, it's from a lot of people. I think they will come, and I think in terms of the council working with you, you have my commitment, and I think the council will probably be interested to go along with this, we want to support you, I mean, anything that you can come back to us with, some ideas on how we can get the community back into our community. When you talk about what makes a city great, and I think our realtors here will tell us this, when you look at big cities, and you look at infrastructure, you look at... this, when you look at big cities and you look at infrastructure, you look at hospitals and things that we don't have, okay, police departments and schools, we don't have that. We have a limited system here, a limited park system, and a limited ability to do cultural events. I'll throw a couple out at you. Marvin and I are guys. We can do a small car show around parking lot here on a Sunday morning. Not going to do a big thing, we're going to do it for 20, 30 people. You're going to, you could do something like a, a small barbecue, a picnic during the summertime for the residents called the council picnic, the city picnic. I saw this work in one of the cities that I used to live in. It was hot dogs and a soda. It's not going to cost us a lot of money. I'll put in money if we have to do it, it's not a big deal. Game night, recitals, small recitals. We're not going to do the Jazz Fest for 20,000 people. We're going to do a classical concert in the back over here. We went to one in the house on New Year's Day. It was beautiful, and it was about 15 people in the house, very talented musicians. We could do stuff like that. That's just a few that come off of my head. I, I served on your committee, I had the pleasure of serving on the committee. I know you'll come up with a whole bunch. I would, I would wonder if you would be interested in coming back with some suggestions in that regard, and see if the council would be interested in supporting the whole order.
Well, I'm really grateful, and it's really good that you bring that up because that was at one time an objective, and that was totally completed by the, it wasn't the committee, it wasn't the council, it was the administration of the city at that time. And, you know, I can shake my head, I mean, trying to control my temper, but it was just outrageous what went on.
We're under new management, so we would like to, if you will take that challenge, I would love to have you back when you think it's an opportune time shortly. I would like to get this going because some of our summer residents, some of our winter residents will be leaving soon, so maybe there's a few things that we might be able to do if the, if the council is, is interested. Ms. Vasquez?
Ms. Vasquez, 2500 Gulf Boulevard. I'm the lead for Next Door for Bel Air Beach, and as such, I heard and decided to get together. So I started these lots. We've had two, I think, well received, just bring whatever, no cost to the city. So we run into a little dilution. Mayor Reeves, Mayor Reeves has said that the city could sponsor these in future so that we could use that in City Hall without charging rent. So there is a real desire, a summer plan.
Ms. Vasquez, by the way, my compliments, I attended my first one last, your last one. It was very well received. This room was filled with people, everybody had a good time. It was fun, and, you know, I think we can continue to do that stuff. It's lower, these things are low or no cost. These things will pay for themselves. There's people who would come in and do this. And again, no disruption to the residents. We're talking about keeping this kind of thing small. That's what I have in mind at least. If anybody else has a different idea, certainly will hear it, but I, I don't, we're not Clearwater, we don't have room for 20,000 fans, but we have room for, we have room for 20 people in the back here, and that would be a beautiful atmosphere, listen to some jazz music by the water, that would be great.
I've got a question. What are some of the initiatives and ideas and low end and proof that Parks and Recreation has, it's under gender and slate to bring forward to the council?
Well, we're working actively now on the Bayside Park in terms of what direction to go. And a lot of the steps that we've started with Parks and Recreation is available, that was something we was really doing. And I don't feel comfortable on any of the details, please start here, but I know maybe we can add anything to it, but that's something that we definitely need to get started very quickly. We've sort of had several years, we've had the issue, which has never had a definite result.
Would you accept my invitation to come back within, let's say, a month or two?
Yes.
I would also say, as a mom, if you involve the children, I think that would be a, you know, a bonus, like maybe an Easter egg hunt or trick or treating at City Hall or something involving getting the kids involved in the city and the parents, because I feel like a lot of the involvement is, like at the potlucks has been the older population, not necessarily the younger with young kids.
Well, we don't, we don't, what would be helpful is to help demographics of the city because we don't know whether 100 kids that live in the city between two and eight or We have no, we have no information on that.
Ms. Vasquez is indicating she could get that. I, I know we have the voter demographics, but that's going to be all of that, so it's, I can tell you there's not that many children, but there are some, and they're, they're in certain neighborhoods, so there are you, there's some, there's some by me, and they are, they are begging for things to do in the city. Plus, not only that, there's grandparents in the city, and they have their grandchildren, so, I mean, it's not our own children, it's our grandchildren, so they will talk.
I'd like to add also, just to reinforce what others have already said, out of everyone I spoke to recently in the city, if I had to pick the top five issues, surprisingly, in that top five were, we want more community events, more gatherings for the city of Bel Air Beach, a way for people to get together and meet each other. They love Martha's movie, Grease, and they want more of that. One of the biggest problems that, that they have is you place this on Next Door and not everyone is on Next Door. I had people that had no idea that your event was about to happen, and I told them about it while I was out about. You know, if the city, if the city is going to, going to be sponsoring these events, well, now we have a method to give the message out efficiently.
Absolutely. One second, Ms. Vasquez, one second. What we all effectively used during the campaign was email blasts. I mean, we've got the list of the people who want to be notified in the city. It's so easy to let them know that we have a game night or we have, you know, the potluck dinner or something, so we just let them know. I mean, if they don't want it, they'll delete it. We get a million emails a day, but these are things that I think people can be aware of, because you don't see it on the sign necessarily, and you don't always go to the website.
I have a big idea.
Just, just to let you know, back in olden days, when Mr. Kelly was mayor, we had a city association at that time. We had Halloween parties, we had Christmas parties, we had our apartment here. He put on a safe fest in the city. So after he left as mayor and things changed, that was all dropped for whatever reason. And it's sad, but now I'm glad to hear that people are interested in this again. But if they wanted information about what we used to do in the past, write us, stuff like an article, because he knows what we did and has record of insurance.
Sold a lot of beer.
I will say that obviously my husband and I have done health and hosted very, a lot of events in this community, and we know we want to get involved and come. We had 140 in our last, we had our party held in this building, but obviously it was a private party, it was still for Bel Air Beach people that we invited, but it was packed. And I will say that it was kind of interesting, getting that party, the fire department was out there, and they did a baby reveal that day, which was really kind of interesting to watch. But at the parties that we held in Kansas City, we would bring in the fire department and the police department to our wild party, and they would let kids get home, fire trucks and stuff like that. So they've had a blast doing that, but the main point is Steve and I have hosted so many events, and we have had no problem getting people together, and they are looking for different things to come to, so.
Good one. Thanks to, I don't think they have, they produce flyers that we distributed as much as we can, because we know that is our best work, with the city's help making everything.
Are there any citizen questions? Thank you all very much. I'll be looking forward to seeing you back. Last, we have the Planning and Zoning Board. We have J.C. Enfil.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, new and old. Looking right at you, Marvin.
I have just my 74th birthday.
And the other people, volunteers, and of course, the court, the state courthouse. I lived, I worked in a courthouse too, I'm in the city building with Malanya and Patty and Lynn, who are extremely helpful, along with Pam, anytime you've got anything going on. Mr. Mayor, you've inherited a great bunch of staff, believe me.
Thank you.
The Board of Planning and Zoning. It goes with a five-year comprehensive plan, and it's presented to us from Patty and Lynn every five years. If there's other things that come up concerning planning or zoning, Patty calls me in, it'll be a special meeting called. We have five members, I have a witch, I've been able to fill since I've been chairman. We've had four committees. I've served on many committees in this city since I came in in 97. Some have dissolved, some have disappeared, some were voted out, but I've remained rather active, to the point that my son and daughter both have bought property in this city. The zoning board and the planning board needed the behest of the city manager and the city clerk. Presently, there are no pending land use changes or zoning changes, which have been presented to the board. It's been a privilege to serve on all the committees that I have for the city. You feel a part of the city when you get involved. I live next to the largest park in the city of Bel Air Beach. It's probably 10 feet wide, 11. At the last hurricane, my wall fell into the park. And I called Lynn and I said, "Your wall is laying in your park, in your park." He said, "Whose wall is it?" He said, "I thought that was your wall." Well, it turned out to be my wall, as Lynn said, "Pick it up." So we went from there and put up a new fence, which is very attractive actually. And with the great coverage that we all have in flood plain, I got stilts and, you know, what they pay when you have to save 5% of your property value. Well, with the $47 that I got, I had to put up the rest of the fence on my own behalf. There isn't many questions, I'm sure, but if there is, I'd be glad to make one up and answer.
Are your members all on staggered terms, different terms? How are you in terms of filling new membership on that, whatever's coming up?
When they come, I, I get whole friends of mine, neighborhoods, neighbor people, that are active and willing to serve, and we go from, then I present it to Patty, and then she brings it to council, and we go from there.
When was the last time that something actually came up that needed a, you know, planning boards involvement?
It was a year and a half ago, when you called the meeting that we had to go over all the comprehensives.
So the comprehensive plan was just resubmitted one year ago and is not due again for four years? Is that correct? Point one. Can I ask one more question, and not necessarily for J.C., but can we get a list of each one of the boards and committee members and who's, who's serving, what their term is, that sort of thing? Because I think we probably have a couple of open seats based on the outcome of the election.
No, we don't.
I'm not talking about your...
I can tell you're facing the other direction.
Well, I just said this just for Patty.
Any other council questions? Citizen questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Welcome this year.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Next, in keeping with something that's coming up that is going to be quite important, we're going to get into this in a very short while after we get this introduction, I've asked our manager of finance, Melanie Crisona, to give us an overview of the budget calendar. This is perhaps the biggest thing that we do all year in terms of the council. This is what will ultimately set the tax rates for next year, will set the spending for next year, will set the budgets for next year. It is something that we have a lot of work to do in terms of the council, in terms of understanding it, reviewing it, and it all begins with our finance managers, officers, Officer Crisona.
Hello. We put out the budget calendar every March, and it basically gives you the dates for the process of the budget because it's, it's more encompassing than just what we do here. It involves working jointly in Pinellas County and the state of Florida. There's deadlines issued by the state for term compliance, as well as deadlines that we have to meet with the county, and that's why these dates are set the way they are. There's actually a budget calendar. The next time we meet for budget, I'll be presenting a staff report. It will come to you probably in July, and that's for setting the tenant to mileage, which is a little different than the, than the actual mileage rate, and that will be your calendar. It basically states, you know, the state says you have to set this on this day, and then 15 days from here is your next step, 30 days. And it, it guides your budget hearings. The timeline for advertising is very strict. If you, you have to have your ad in the paper, and you have to, you have the meeting five days within the advertisement, three to five days, that kind of thing. So that's basically what this is. There is a little bit of Google Room in here, so if somebody, and that's why we like to put it out in advance, one, so you guys can get it on your calendar, and two, if there's a date that you absolutely don't think you can make, let me know, and we may be able to adjust it, depends on which one of the days they are. But for the most part, this is just the standard that's going to tell you when the budget workshops are. The bulk of the work is going to be happening in-house. We've already started. I'll be sending out an instructional letter to all the staff that works on budgets, and then I will be sending them all the individual departmental budgets for them to start preparing. Capital projects gets developed and turned in, and once everything's all brought together from the different departments, Lynn goes over it with each department head, and then once we've kind of gotten a fairly solid budget put together, that's, Lynn provides that to you all July 1st, and then leave that. I don't know if that's in the charter or if that's in your job description, but it's, it's rigged up somewhere, it has to have it to July 1st or so. And that's when the county property appraiser advises us of the, the property values. We receive that, and so that way that I can make sure that that ad for your is calculated based on the most recent property values when you get your budget. And then the workshops happen after that, so that gives you time to look at what we put together. You can dig into it, ask whatever questions you want. You can email us, call us, ask us for extra information when you have the workshops, and you can really dig into it. And I believe we've got three weeks between the first workshop and the second workshop so that, you know, when you've completed the first workshop, that we have things that you want to change or modify, or things you have to add or delete. It gives you three weeks for everybody to do research or whatever it is that they need to do to come back to, or only three with an updated budget. And it's at that meeting, once we finish the workshop, we actually hold a special meeting at the end of that, and that's one of the regular guidelines that we have to follow, where we set the tentative budget, and that, the military. And that's a little different, we're not actually setting the military, it's tentative or it's part of the term process. And it's handled differently in different towns. Historically, we used to choose a higher military for the tentative because legally you can always reduce your military, because you can never raise it. So as we go through the process and we're making changes, it gives you all the room to modify things as you want. Never in the history of my doing budget have we ever adopted a final budget. Never in the history of my doing budget have we ever adopted a final budget with a higher military rate. We've always adopted a budget with the rate that I used to prepare the actual budget. So the tentative can be higher. I think when we had issues in the city with controversy or whatever, let's just keep it the same. And that's fine too. You just need to be aware that, you know, if you're thinking of doing the projects, that you can't raise it. And what I'll do is I'll prepare a schedule of the ad of the law. I'll show you what we would be able to collect if we use the rollback rate, what we would get if we use the current rate that we're using at this time. And then 3%, 5%, 10% is typically this spreadsheet that I showed you. It gives you an idea of how much money we would bring in on those fairly stiff military rates. And it gives let you choose how you want to go. In the past, it was 2005 or 2006, our military rate was 2.34 and they lowered it to 1.996, which was great because property values were really high at the time. But unfortunately, the recession happened immediately after that. And they never adjusted the military for all those years. And so we lost over a million dollars in ad of the law over the years because of reducing property values. So in 2012, they raised the military to 2.0394. And rather than being organic and going with the rollback and the roll forward, we left it at that grade to make up for all those years of lost ad of the law. Last year was the first year that we sat in a budget workshop and said, depending on what you want to do with capital projects and that kind of thing, you may want to consider going with the rollback rate or keeping it as it is. And because of some of the big projects like the Stormwell project, the council decided to just keep it at the 2.0394. So that's something that y'all will want to keep in mind when you do your first budget workshops is look at that spreadsheet that I prepared and think about what you want to do for the overall budget and whether you want to, you know, go with the rollback rate, keep it where it is or possibly increase it. So that's probably the most important thing we do at the final budget workshop. And then everything after that is towards settling on a final budget, which happens in September. And I guess your new, you know, that's our 11 new people. And I've said this again, every time we move people. I know sometimes the government process for accounting and budget and terminal, that is kind of, it's very foreign to regular for-profit accounting. And anybody is welcome to come in and sit down with me in the old place. I know I had Dr. Brooks with me for two hours on the caper one time. And I'm happy to do that. So what are the questions you have?
I've got a couple of questions. July 1st, the DR 420 that's delivered to us, that's a final number then in terms of the property assessed values, right? That's the one that we can, or they can adjust it after that. We're smiling.
Final in the world of Bell Air County property appraiser is a very fluid thing because people can get their property taxes and, "Oh, that's not right, I disagree." And they can go and ask for adjustment. They can ask for somebody to come out and look at their property. And, you know, we have a lot of realtors here buying and selling. That doesn't stop on July 1. And so they give you a final on July 1. We actually get a preliminary final in May, which is what I'm using for my mockups of the budget. And then we get a final on July 1. But I will tell you that that DR 420 is always just a little different than the certified value that we get in May of the following year. It's never, ever exactly the same, but it's an immaterial amount. I mean, you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, so.
We would be able to use that, I mean, with pretty good certainty to make our decisions as to, you know, I wrote, again, I'm not going back too much to the campaign. I wrote a whole email on the military thing. And keeping the military constant is one thing, but if the, I expect again that we'll probably have an increase in property values this year. So we need to know that as a council to determine whether we're really going to be increasing people's taxes in a transparent way, saying, "You know what? We're not going to touch your village rate, but your ballot, your value of your house is going up." So we need to know that number from the assessor.
Absolutely. That is the number that we need to be using to base the budget on.
That's the best number that we'll--
And that's one of the reports when I talked about the rollback rate, the current rate, 3%, 5% and 10%. That's the number that I will be using to calculate that spreadsheet. So you'll see right up front, the rollback rate is the amount of military that you would choose if you were going to collect the exact same amount of ad of the law next year as we're going to do this year.
And if I look at this correctly, Monday, September 16th, 2019 is the final public hearing on the budget. That is it for the council. That's when we adopt it, adopt the military, adopt the tax rate. We're set in stone at that point.
That's correct. And usually, yeah, that's a fairly short hearing because it's a special hearing just for budget. There's nothing else on the agenda. So and by then, it's, everything's been changed and modified based on the court requests. And so it's pretty much a formality. You have a script that you read that I'll give to you. It looks like exactly verbatim what to say.
I mean, by then it's over basically.
Yes. Do not deviate, full script.
Anyone on the council have questions?
No one, just off the top of your head, actually. What was the actual average of person that Bell Air, that Bell Air Beach city or government actually placed on the homeowners? I mean, the county of the state--
I'm not sure what you're asking.
All the taxes you live in May. Bell Air Beach is only a small amount.
That's true. When you get your property tax bill, you may, let's just ballpark and say you owe Pinellas County property appraiser $10,000. Of that, what Bell Air Beach is getting is maybe $3,000. It's the smallest portion of your bill. The biggest part, I think, goes to the school board. School board, and then you're paying the general fund and the children's welfare board and EMS. And there's just, there's a whole big long list. But yeah, it's a small piece.
And I think that's what we should emphasize maybe in the next coming years is to show how little our government actually takes on the tax number. Might make people feel a little better.
Maybe a little, you know, I think people hate paying taxes and, you know. They're really paying most of their taxes to the county, but you do get-- and for us, it's the largest piece of our pie is the property taxes. But for you, it's a little, small piece of your overall. And I think that I actually did that in reverse because in 2012, when we talked about raising the military, because we were so far behind because of the recession, we hadn't been paving streets or doing anything. So I did just exactly what Mark's saying. Instead of looking at your entire property tax bill, I said, "Okay, you paid, last year you paid $300. If I raise it up to this amount, you'll pay $306." Right? So if changes to the military on our end are a small impact on the total property tax bill.
Like we did it this year, you gave us about four or five different choices. And maybe it would be good to break it out and say, "Okay, we keep it the same as this, we're going to raise it."
That's exactly what I gave you. Yes, that's exactly what you gave me.
Spell it out under each section.
Now, if you wanted me to go further, I do that every year. That's the ad of the law spreadsheet that you get at the budget workshops. That's absolutely what you get because I have to do that. That's part of the legal filing as far as figuring out what your rollback rate is. I have to report that to the county and the state. So that's part of what I do. But to Mark's point, what I could do is add a second sheet to it and say, "Okay, these are looms property taxes. And at this rate, this is what he paid last year. If we change it to this rate or this rate, this is what his ad of the law would be just for us, not his total property tax bill." So that you can see the impact on the individual homeowner.
Lynn Reeves and I have had numerous conversations about budget and capital improvements. The tendency is to look at the budget in a microcar, just like, hey, we're looking at next year. And what we've been discussing more and more is looking at out years. Because what we've got is we've got reserve funds, which is basically our savings account. And depending on what kind of chunk we take out of the capital improvements, how much we do this year, how much we do next year, revenues coming in, expenditures going out, kind of dictates where the burn rate is and when we run out of money. So I think the pressure is going to be on this council for this budget bill to instead of, "I want to be looking at the next year," which means we're looking at two, three, four, five years down the road for how quickly they're going to burn through that savings and reserve funds and kind of program what the capital improvement is going to look like in the out years, not just this year and the next year, two, three, four, five years down the road.
That's kind of, I had a start next to capital improvement schedule. And we, Lynn is going to be giving Melanie something then of April about capital improvements. But at what point do we really get involved between now and July? The problem is, if I remember this last year, July 1st, we get dumped all this information. You guys have taken three months to gather. And there's no way possible, especially having looked at a budget for the first time, it's very difficult. So I think that this schedule's great, but from a council perspective, we probably need to have some meetings in between that we're really talking about and working with you on those capital, that capital improvement schedule and how it relates to our strategic plan and what our vision is. Because we're really, you know, we get this giant bunch of paper that you cannot possibly understand everything that you're handed July 1. And you have to make a decision how to move it forward. Melanie walks through it and tries to help us, but it's a lot of information. It's like being fed through a fire hose, so.
I think we're foreshadowing what's coming after we finish the strategic plan. But the next thing I have, which we have everything kind of put under general items, but we're going to be talking about formation of a finance committee. And that's where we're going to do that work or not. We, hopefully, if the council agrees, we're going to have a group of talented financial people who can give us that information, do this analysis work for us and feed that to us, including having the capital information for us. Because if we try to do this ourselves, I agree with you, we are going to be overwhelmed, particularly with some of the other stuff that we have to look at. There's a multitude of issues that we have right now. So I'm going to be speaking about that in a couple of minutes. Thank you. That's wonderful. Did we have any questions from the citizens? Ms. Crisona, thank you very much for the great overview. We look forward to working with you on this. At this point, we're kind of going into the unscripted portion of the show here, but I think very important, it's a very important piece. Last month, for the folks that may not have been at the meeting, the strategic plan was passed and made via resolution by the council. And we're bound by that as a council to operate. It's this, I liken it at this point to the foundation of a house. We have a foundation. We don't have the sticks, we don't have sheet rock, we certainly don't have a working kitchen. But we have an idea where we want to go. The issue, the way I see it, and I'd said this before, was that was passed by four people who are no longer here, three people who are here. I think it's a very good plan from my opinion. I've asked that Glenn Gunn, who is, and Lynn Reeves were pretty much the architects of this plan, to give us an overview of where we're going to go from here. With the council, it's okay. One of the things I would like to do is re-adopt this plan. Because when we re-adopt it, four new people, of course, the three returning people, we have the opportunity to make any changes that we wish to make. Again, I think it's in pretty good condition, but you may have a different opinion. We're going to re-adopt it and then we own it. We own it and we work with it from there because then we can't say somebody else gave this to us. So I would like to adopt that as soon as possible, hopefully at our April 1st meeting. So with that said, what does Mayor Gunn?
Yeah, I think most people here, even in the audience and the new council members, a lot of people were attending the strategic plan meeting. So I'm not going to go through the entire plan. Lynn Reeves has it copied for you. And do you just want to hit some of the highlights? If you look at page four for the legal cover, strategic plan, it talks about what the strategic plan was designed for. I just want to reiterate some of these things. It's the creation of a shared vision and a common business for all of the city leadership. And something I think we should touch on, hearing from some of these boards and committees, is we need to integrate them into the strategic plan. They need to understand it because it's supposed to be a bunch of collective goals and areas of strategic focus. It's supposed to be the baseline for our decision-making. It serves the framework for making business decisions, budgetary decisions, capital improvement decisions. When we talk about decision-making and prioritizing limited resources, I mean, that should be as, hey, the budget process and the biggest part of that budget process, I mean, if you paredo out the expenditures, capital improvements is the number one line item for this cost. So we need to understand the capital improvement projects. And just as Julie touched on, we need to be looking at and becoming an integral part and a part of the sanity check and do those capital improvements fall within the framework of our decision-making? Part of the strategic plan is we now have prioritized goals, areas that we need to do a sanity check against and make sure that the priority is there for how we spend our limited resources equally. The other thing I need to touch on is that this stuff only works with the commitment and the self-discipline of this council. In other words, it's not just a piece of paper because we want to check a blog like everybody else. Hey, we got a strategic plan. We've got some goals, they're prioritized, and we need to incorporate that into how we make decisions. We've got one, two, five goals. If you look at the last page of the second handout you've got, what's next? You can see kind of a graphic on the goals. And what we consider to be those things that we need to focus on strategically to improve our city and make us the place that we want to be, the premier city of Gulf Coast residential community. So you see the goals and the priorities, safety and health, tax, dollar values, tax and community, comms, E2R. Now, why I say we need to integrate the boards and committees, where since we were just talking about parks and recreation, well, they need to understand where they fall within the priorities here. Because, for instance, it's great to want to improve all of our parks and our recreation area and all that stuff, but we have to, and it's cruel to be doing it for. You know, it's great because you consider places like Indian Rocks or Clearwater. Well, yeah, people come from all over the Pinellas County area to enjoy their parks, their beaches or wherever. But the people who benefit from that are the commercial businesses. And guess what? They feed tax dollars in to support all of that stuff. We don't have that sort of thing. So something we just need to get our head wrapped around is, you know, you may be asked to spend money and support things that our tax base and limiting budget is being taxed or being, sadly, we're supporting. So it all feeds into yet. So that's the boards and committees. The baseline and the framework for decision-making, it's a living doctrine, just like the mayor has said. And again, the commitment and self-discipline of users. I'll just touch on the second handout, what's next. We've gone-- We've gone through, if you look at the back of the actual plan, it talks about where we're going next. There's goals, there's objectives against some of these things. Lynn Reeves is working hard to add specificity to the objectives on the, like on the side of that graph we talked about. He's designating orders for all those objectives. We'll be talking about metrics and how important they are and how we utilize those to kind of understand whether we're doing better, whether we're doing worse. Are we moving towards our goals and objectives? Lynn Reeves is also going to be putting some timelines against some of these objectives. A presentation, no later than May, but he's already pretty much nailed down most of that stuff. Adopt and institutionalize a strategic plan. The short term's already been done via the city council resolution. The long term will be adding to our list of things we want to discuss once we go back to the city charter, which we use year 20, I guess, or next year. With the planning horizon at three to five years, the new leadership team should be starting to think about, what are some stretch goals and objectives we want to come up with? Lynn Reeves, I just kind of threw out some ideas there. Again, looking down the road, two, three, four, five years down the road. Maybe we want to reduce our expenditures by a certain percentage by a certain year. We want to eliminate our capital improvement backlog by a certain year. We're already looking for the Gulf Coast utilities, street lighting, marine improvements, that sort of thing. Next page, metrics. Why do we measure? What do we measure? Who should be doing the measuring? Next page, essentially what gets measured gets going. By coming up with a handful of measures, we're basically communicating to the residents, to the staff, to anybody who's looking at whatever we're, what we consider to be critical and what we consider to be important. Bottom line is if you don't measure it, then you can't control it. And if you can't control it, you certainly can't manage it. The one of the metrics, effectiveness, efficiency, adaptability. Effectiveness, doing the right thing. Efficiency, doing the right thing in the right way. And adaptability is when things change, get adept and respond to changing environment and service processes. Who ultimately determines quality? The customer, yes. We may not agree with you with what you think that quality is, but at the end of the day, it's the person you provide that service or product to who determines what the quality is. This is three-legged stool, cost, get, performance. The typical conventional wisdom goes, you can typically have two legs of the stool at one time. You can't necessarily have all three. So part of what our job is as a leadership team is to figure out what the balance is here. You can have it cheap and you can have it quick, but it may not be the quality that you want. You can have high quality and you may have it quick, but it's not going to be cheap. Those are the things that we need to balance as a leadership team. Who should be doing the metrics and the measuring? Mostly the person closest to the activity. They know the job the best and better than anyone. And it also provides them the immediate feedback to make corrections or improvements to their process or activity. Successful attributes of metrics, a small number of measures, probably things that you are already capturing. It should be, they should be easily comprehensible. In other words, they should be able to stand alone. Joe resident walks in, sees our scoreboard and our measures hanging on the wall. And guess what? They can kind of figure out what we're measuring and why we're doing it. Because we're identifying via those metrics what we consider to be important to the city. And those are how we can communicate to the residents and to ourselves that we're getting better or we're getting worse. And lastly, is they should be highly visible. It's like the speedometer in your car. It gives you feedback. It helps you monitor speed and how you're doing. But if it's not sitting in front of you, it's in your trunk, it doesn't know who it's on. So those measures need to be highly visible. Not only for the people, like our residents, but for the people to monitor themselves. They need to know how well they're doing. Where do we begin? This will come down the road, I assume. There'll be follow-up workshops. We're already talking about the strategic plans and our goals and objectives. City managers got this concept, a municipal scorecard, which plays right into this. What are those handful of measures that we want to communicate to our residents that, hey, we're on top of this job, we're doing good, we're getting better and, you know, your tax dollar is safe with us. And again, just that last graphic kind of familiar is where we're going to be looking in the future.
The biggest thing I think we can do is provide the city manager with our money so the residents think he's doing the job. So those tasks that he has to do, which are flooding the streets and lighting, are going to get done. Residents look at the parks, look at the condition of the city and at all, say, it's fine. And I know in the past year, there's been a lot of Patty's and the staff have done to make sure the residents, and one, that has not ever happened before. Nobody really knew too much what was going on unless you walked in your ass. So Glenn, a lot of input and I just hope we can follow through with all of the rules. The budget rules, so we're going to be going into in a second.
But two things. One, thank you Lynn for your very heavy work and everyone on the council, Julie and Marv, for returning. And I know this was a lot of effort, a lot of work. One of the things that we've discussed, I know, you know, with each other probably before the election and stuff, candidates and stuff, was the idea of maybe shepherding an idea through, taking an individual issue and shepherding it. You have truly been a shepherd with this. And I would ask, would you be interested if it's okay to continue with this? Because I don't want this to get forgotten about. This is not done. It was, and I met for three and a half hours with Lynn and Patty and, you know what? I can't come back to it. I said, you know what? We forgot the strategic plan. I don't want that to happen. I don't want the strategic plan to be forgotten about. So please, if you're willing to shepherd this thing through.
Yes, of course. And I think it falls right in line with, of course, Dave Gies. He's came to this place big on communication. I think there are going to be certain things that people are going to champion on this council and become that part of the council brain to talk about this stuff.
I'll say that first. Anybody else on the council have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. I watched a lot of this unfold, putting it all together. And I can name you for your work. In case everyone here doesn't know, yes, this is a living document. This is not always going to be the way it is. Things will change. There'll be very minute changes. But as we accomplish major goals, those things may change from time to time. And those things will move to the wayside and then we'll have bigger goals later down the road that will replace those big goals that we currently have. The key to this whole thing working is everyone here participating and making sure that you understand what it is. Whenever you feel like that something needs to be changed, we all need to discuss it. We need to talk about it, get it out in the open. And make sure that if you do have concerns, that if there's a possibility that others share those concerns, that we come to a consensus and make much changes. I don't see anything right now. This is a great starting point. Definitely, this is the way to do it. And I've been following Pinellas County and what they're doing right now and looking to them for some very good examples. And this is pretty much right on track with where we're supposed to be. So a great job.
What I would like to do with the council, and this, our first meeting, they did this on purpose to us, is April 1st, April 4th today. But it's not going to be a joke. It's going to be a real meeting. April 1st, we're going to, I'd like to reintroduce this as a, well, I can't reintroduce it. I'm going to ask if there's a motion to reintroduce this plan to be re-adopted by the new council. If we have changes, it could go as an amendment. So if there's something that you see in this plan that you wish to change, and I'm going to give it another look through. I've already read it through, I think, two or three times already. But if there's anything that we want to change, this would be the time to do it. Now, if we get more than a couple of changes, it's going to have to come back to our next work session because we can't debate it that long in council. But if there's only a couple, I know Jody Shirley had something last time about the, she had an issue with one of the items and it was changed. So if we have something like that, we can make a change. If you have a lot of issues, that's fine. We'll just bring it back and it'll just get re-adopted at the next meeting. I don't think there's going to be a whole set of changes, but that's my opinion. So we'll see what happens. And I'd like to, if we can reintroduce it and get this repassed. And then I would also like, and I don't know how we do this, via either the email blast, something on our website, maybe a citizens' meeting, but I would like the citizens to know that we have passed a strategic plan, what's in it, you know? And they're not going to read through the whole thing, but maybe some type of a big undigest, something simple that, you know, like kind of what we did for the code. We just sent out something. I don't think we have to mail it, but maybe something to them that we now have a strategic plan, because this is a big deal.
Well, Mayor, we'll, once we, you know, there's going to be a matrix to this and Vice Mayor mentioned. And at that point, I think we would put it on the website and probably in the city news that I send every other month. We'll have another one that will be going out in April. We'll make sure we feature that, you know, where it's at on the website so they can, if they want to look at it. So I think that's kind of where I'm going with it, what I thought, how we should roll it out. And, you know, I would say the matrix, I'll admit, my license time in the middle of April. I'll give that to council. You know, it was part of that. But that's my charge to say, okay, who the task is assigned to, the timeline and what the deliverable is, as an example, say, the emergency plan. I want to get any updates to that done by June. Reason being, guess what? That's hurting. So, you know, there's certain things that we'll do rather quickly. There's other things that's going to take some time. Evaluation of the personnel manual and trying to give you something more so for Patty and myself, but the staff also to be able to look at. Maybe it's a point system in the rating system that's a little different. It shows, because I know there was, I'll call it consternation, about the two evaluation tools that we have, you know, to be inherent. So that's going to take a little longer to do. But my goal is to get that done in a specific, which is, except for.
I'd just like to clarify because I'm not quite clear what we're trying to accomplish by April 1st. Essentially, this strategic plan has been adopted by the city. So I mean, it's not like we go to the next council and re-adopt it. No, this is a part of the city at this point. I don't think that between now and April 1st, there's adequate time or forum to be discussing or considering changes. And it took us six, eight, the better part of six to eight months even to get this part. A work session is the best form for doing that, not just an email blast and then trying to plan through a council session. So I would just try to make haste slowly here. You know, this is a big change as it is. Let's kind of see how it feels and put on the shoes and walk around it and learn it a little bit before we already start making changes to it. So that's my only caution is, let's see how this works. And if we want to make changes for consideration for the next budget, I think that's a good thing. But I think the best way to do that is in a dedicated structured work session where we can really set aside some dedicated time, not just email blast because we've all seen how sunshine kind of chokes that down and compartmentalizes the change.
Say, email blast to the citizens, not for the council members. But if you want to do this in council, then that's fine. We can bring this back next month. But I would like, reminding a few, an outgoing council has bound an incoming council with full knowledge that that was going to happen or a darn good chance that that was going to happen. Two people had already resigned from that council, or not resigned, but did not run. So what I want is to give the opportunity for the four new people to take another look. I wouldn't expect that the three returning people are going to have much change because I know you've spent a lot of time on this. Maybe the four new people aren't going to have much change on it either. But if we're going to be asked to run with this, and we are, I mean, it is the resolution right now, then I want to give everyone the opportunity, if they want to make an adjustment to this, to have something in it. Because I don't know that I agree with 100%. I probably agree with 97% of this. And I don't know that the 3% that I disagree with is even significant at this point in time. So we probably can wait. But if there's something that someone has a problem with, then let's get it out in the open. Because the seven of us are now charged to take this thing forward. And I just want to make sure that we have complete buy-in with everyone here.
And that is the process. It's a living document. All I'm saying is it's a time-consuming process. And there's a lot of exchange and thought and discussion that goes into developing that end product. And I just don't think that you're going to accomplish that between March 21st and April 1st. I think that's a big fight.
And Mayor, I want, just to comment, if you're going to start changing stuff, then all that's doing is pushing back the matrix, you know? Because you can't expect the staff to move forward with what was brought to us and then in the middle of the road say, well, I don't want you to do that. I want you to go do something else. So, and that's how it was kind of adopted. It was adopted in the sense that, okay, the city council had adopted it, started it, worked on it for six months. And the next city council will come up with their objectives for the year. Because we only have eight people that work in the city. We don't have 50 people that can, you know, do 50 objectives. It just doesn't work that way. You know, we still have the regular things that we have to do on a regular basis, you know? So trying to change something, you're just pushing it.
I'm not saying we're going to change it. I'm just saying we're going to evaluate it. That's the difference.
Would it be fair to just say, has everyone read this to date? Is this the first time you're seeing it, the new council, that's the first time?
Yes, it's the first time for me. But I would like to just, again, it was adopted. It is a living document. It can be changed and altered every time. So I don't get the whole re-adopt period. I think that's a waste of our time as well as our community's time to meet here just to hear a re-adopt. We've got other things we need to be focused on. This could be changed. As Lynn has mentioned, Councilwoman Graham, Lynn, several other people. It is a living document. Living documents can be changed and altered. But this one was adopted. I don't understand why we're going to take the time to re-adopt.
I think, do you mind if I say something? I think probably what the mayor is trying to convey is that as the new council, that we are all basically embracing this policy. And is there a way that we could just vote on it, non-binding?
Not tonight, no.
No, I'm not saying now, but what I'm saying, I'd like to, sort of like a non-binding resolution, that we support this and we'll continue moving.
So I propose the re-adoption. But if not, then let's put it on for the next council for the next work session. That's one month. And then everyone can come back with their comments, if any. And if there's no comments, then it stands as is. If there are comments, then it'll come up for me first. I would continue with the matrix. I don't think there's going to be, again, I don't, Dave and I have been through this. I don't think there's going to be probably a lot of significant comments. But I don't know. There's too many people who may have tremendous comments. I have no idea.
I'd like to see this work through for at least eight months to a year. And yes, bring up the changes during that timeframe, discuss them at workshops, upcoming workshops. And then if we want to adopt some of those changes after this plan is in the works for a while, then start doing something. But you've got to put some time into it to make this thing work.
Yeah, I think, you know, it wasn't in the vein of some slick move of the outgoing council. council, we're going to ram this through. The, the thing was, they'd already put in six, eight months and a lot of discussion and bought into it, and they didn't want this to delay out anymore. I mean, it could have, they could have just chucked it over the transom and said, hey, you know, we're not going to deal with it, you guys do it, and guess what, we started all from square zero again, and another six, eight months down the road. So I, I think Marv has a word idea, let's kind of walk around and listen a little bit.
Again, sorry to interrupt, my thoughts are not to argue with this plan, that is not it. My thoughts are to convey to the citizens that as the incoming council, we also support the strategic plan. And, you know, what we do with it in the future, after we announce, hey, you know, this was done right before we came on board, we support. That's, that's basically what my thought, how I would like to get across to the citizens.
Maybe we can take a look at it for a month, see where we stand first, and then discuss it at some point. Because if everybody agrees with it, I don't argue with anything. So, again, I, I think the plan's good, so I don't think, I agree with it, but Dave does too, but we have two new people left to review, so let's see what they have to say, and then we'll see if we need anything more. I would continue, it continues until changed, I would say, move forward.
That was, that was all at the beginning, you know, just what the basic plan together, this is all basic. And then, hey, as time goes on, you see something's not working, line of one, this is not working, we see something, we can change it as it goes. And I think that's what we do, we find something, and in the next six, eight months, that's probably where we change it. Take it from all this work and move forward.
I think the goal is to be mindful of what's, what's in the plan, and I, and I believe that's where you're kind of coming from, Joe, is to be mindful of, this is, this is the plan we've adopted, everyone be mindful of this, we're helping with further, you know, improvements in the city and things, just be mindful of the goals and objectives that we have here, and, and getting everyone to acknowledge that, yep, those, we agree with these goals and objectives, and just be mindful of those when we're making decisions for the city.
Any citizen with comments? We're moving to the general area, we do have a couple of big areas here. We alluded to it, Jody kind of led into it here with the finance committee, and I'll say my piece and then I'll throw it to the council for their comments. I've said it from the get-go, I said it from day one in the meeting, and I was going to go through personally this budget line item by line. That is a bear of a task for one person, it is a bear of a task for seven of us on council. So the idea has come up of forming a finance, an ad hoc finance committee, which would work towards that goal, basically relieving us of that burden. And I do agree, we have a lot of stuff to do over here in the next coming months. Most of the work that we have is going to be front-end loaded over here, because it seems like after September, we've already passed our capital plan, we've already passed our budget, we already know what our tax rate is, we've already figured out a lot of our strategic planning for next year. But we're going to get to that point right now, and we're not, we're at zero right now. I, I know Jody's mentioned that you get a book of stuff, and that's not the way to do a budget. The way to do a budget, and I work for Fortune 100 companies, is you do it zero-based, you start with zero, everything starts with zero, and you decide what you should do. That means salaries starts with zero, that means police starts with zero. Now that doesn't mean, and no, I'm not misquoting, that we're not going to have police, it just means, what is the best expenditure of our money? What is the best expenditure of our money for salaries? That takes a group of people to put together. I've heard talks sitting in the audience many, many times about what do other cities do, what's the best practices, how many people should we run the city with? How should we be running the city? What's the right way to spend money? What should our capital projects be? Should we raise taxes next year for capital? We don't have answers to any of this right now. And the only way we're going to get those answers, in my opinion, is to have a dedicated group of people with a financial background. And they don't have to all be accountants, they can be business people, people who have an idea of how budgets work and how finance works, to pour through this, do that legwork, do that hard work for us in advance of this budget process, so that when we're called upon to analyze this, we're not starting at square one. And I think that's a major benefit to our staff, particularly our finance officer. I'll go in and spend five hours with her, that's fine, okay, but it's wrong if I do that and then Dave comes in the next day and Clint comes in the day after that, we're going to be repetitive. And the sunshine law prohibits us from getting together and coming in. So I think the finance committee is the easiest way to do that. They would be charged with four or five people to six people, I don't know how many people we'll even get, but delivering us something by the beginning of the budget season, by July, by June, some type of report, they don't have to agree on everything, but give us their recommendations for where we can save, where we should spend, are we doing best practices, is the city being run properly in terms of its expenditures? And then that's something that forms the basis for us to act upon, and we have already done a lot of the background work. With that, I'll throw it out, that would be an ad hoc committee, I can't appoint it myself, the council has to approve it and, and we'll make the appointments through the citizens.
Mayor, I, I just want to make something that, I, I think you're going a little bit against the charter. Charter says that the city manager will present a budget to the city council. It doesn't, 15 years to 12 years ago, when we changed to the city manager's former government, the city used to have those type of committees. But now, the charter's changed, there's a city manager, former government, it states that. I don't have a problem presenting stuff through after the budget process is gone, and I understand what Jody's saying about capital and operating, I'll say, okay? And maybe what we need to do is take, do our capital, which we typically do first, and then bring that to the city council at an earlier time. Or if, if, and once we get it to the city council, if you want a committee to look at it, that's fine, I don't have an issue with that. And we'll work with them, I don't have that issue either. But I don't feel that it's, you know, because of what the charter says, that we should be going outside of the charter.
I'm not advocating going outside of the charter, you're going to still prepare the budget, they can take this year's budget and do this analysis. Because as we know, even though I just did a speech about zero-based, we know darn well that we're going to start with this year's expenses, okay? So they can take this year's existing budget and do that analytics on it. And knowing full well that, you know, okay, let's take salary, we've got $600,000 of salary, we're going to increase it 3% this year because everybody wants a raise, and you can have $618,000 next year. Fine, you can look at last year's number, and you still can do that analysis, and you could say, are we paying our employees the right number, too much, too little, do we have too many? And that goes for every single thing that we have here. You and I spoke about, you know, and again, someone, you gave us a list of contracts, we'll talk about that next, but we can't bust contracts, I'm not advocating breaching contracts, but we're going to take a look at these contracts when they come up, and is this the right way to go about buying garbage services and buying this, that, and the other thing? What do other cities do? That can be done now with the existing budget, they could look at it, and then when they get the new one, they supplement it. So no, I'm not advocating that they prepare the budget, that is totally your job.
Well, I'm not saying, I, I understand that, but I do understand what Jody said about, and, you know, I'll talk to Melanie a little more about this, but I think we could do that. I came from that scenario, where we, did the capital first, presented that to the city council, they blessed it or didn't bless it, told us to do this or do that.
In a work session, sorry.
In a work session. And then, you know, a time later, we came back and gave the operating budget to the city council. So maybe we need to, you know, and I'll talk to Melanie about this, maybe we need to adjust that a little bit. Because if that's going to make it easier on the council, that's fine with me, I don't have to follow that. And I don't have a problem with the committee looking at our finished product, but, you know, the charter, what the charter says, I, I believe we, we have a duty to follow that. I, I mean, I don't know what the other council members think, but I believe because the charter was adopted, and there was a reason it went to city manager, former government, and let's see, there's, I think Jody was here, I know I was here, Marv was here, and there, there was a reason for that, because of what was happening in the other direction. So I, I think, you know, we can adjust the process to alleviate some of, if the others have that same issue, I don't know.
The main thing is, is just to make sure the council is fully aware of what they're putting on.
Yeah.
I think there's some compromises here, I think, I, I agree, I think the council needs to be a little more proactive and be a stakeholder in the budget building, especially in the capital improvement hierarchy and some of the operating budget. You need to be a little more proactive there, and that's one thing. I, I'm not sure the mayor is trying to restrict or constrain your responsibility or duties to execute and submit the budget. I think it's creating a forum to look at perhaps the past budget, to come back to the council and say, you know, you ought to look at this item, because there may be a better way of doing things.
I'll give you an example. You have a code officer making $70,000 a week.
Oh, she makes $70,000.
70 with benefits. I spoke to the sheriff, I can get that for $15,000 a year. That's best practices, okay? He does it for other cities. Now, I wasn't going to put that out in an email blast, that's why I saved it for tonight, but that's what I'm talking about. And I don't, I don't in any way, it doesn't in any way constrict you from submitting the budget you wish to this council. But somebody can go through that budget right now and say, you know what, Mr. Manzo, Mayor Manzo, you spoke to the sheriff, you have an alternative. And there's not only that alternative, there's Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, they do things differently than us. I'm just using this as an example, I'm not even advocating that we cut this, but it's an example, okay? And it's a huge example, that's $50,000 in our pocket. So if we can do something like that, and we can look at each and every line item, we can do that now, it doesn't, you're still preparing your budget, but when the council gets the budget for review, we've had a team of people look through this and they say, you know what, you've got alternatives here when it comes to this salary, you've got alternatives when it comes to, you know, possibly garbage pickup, or, you know, any of the other areas. Some areas we don't have alternatives with, example, utilities, you know, what are you going to do? You're paying what dues charges you. But there are alternatives in certain areas, and that's where I would like to know what the options are. And as an individual, I don't have the time to sit and talk to six different cities and, you know, and see what their best practices are. But a committee can go through that. It doesn't, you're still preparing your budget, you're not even being affected by it.
Well, I would, I would challenge your $15,000 number, I'm just going to say that right up front, because the sheriff charges $46 an hour. So if that's the case, what are you going to get for $15,000? Now, do you want a one-day-a-week code officer? If that's what the city wants, that's up to you. But that isn't what I heard from an election a year ago, or the election this year, you know, code enforcement, uniformity, things of that nature. And that person is doing more than code enforcement. So I, I challenge that comment, because I know what Bellard Bluffs is doing, they're, I think they're doing like 15 hours a week of code enforcement, okay? That's what a third of a person, we couldn't even take care of the code with a half a person here, when we had that person, we had a part-time person for some length, you know.
It's a different, different.
Different mentality.
Again, it's not to debate for one point, it's to give an example, okay? Maybe you'll convince us that you need a full-time code officer, maybe you need two code officers.
Well, I'm not saying.
What I'm saying is, is that I want someone to look at this. I can't go and visit with the sheriff, and neither can everybody else do all of this stuff on a ongoing basis, but the finance committee can pour through, because they just have the one focus. We still have to look at capital projects, next thing I'm going to talk about is communication MIS. We're about, oh, I would say a week away, maybe, or two weeks away from getting sued, because we're probably not ADA compliant. So, you know, we have other fish to fry right now, and I think as a council, we may want to spend our time working on some of these other things that affect the city, if there's a committee that's willing to take up some of the labor. It doesn't, no one's saying to change your charge on the charter in a way, you're, you know, you and the finance officer prepare the budget, and that's, that's an example. Anyway, it's my suggestion, it'll, it would go out for the next council meeting, if you don't adopt it, then it dies there, and that's review the budget the way we've always reviewed it, so.
Well, I think you asked about changing it to separate, is that the consensus that you want, we'll separate?
Definitely. It's better if you break it up in smaller chunks, and where we can digest it easier.
I, I tell you what, right now, with Lynn's reorganization of the staff, we have no idea how many hats each one of those people wear. We don't know what their tasks are. Most cities, some of them just slightly bigger than this, they have an assistant clerk, they have an assistant code enforcement, they have assistant, this assistant manager. So we better take a look at just what these people do, and Nicole.
And that goes right to the heart of the strategic plan, the goal two, objective three, it's review personnel.
Yeah, we need those job descriptions.
As we ask the work through.
That's why I'm saying, shaking a tree too much. That's what I'm saying, let's start doing this, because you're going to be asking me and everyone else on council, do you want to raise the citizens' taxes? Do you want to, the answer's no, if we don't know what we're doing. You know, I mean, I can't vote for a raise taxes if we don't know we have job descriptions, because then, Marv's right, we don't know what the folks are doing. They may be underpaid for all we know, I, I don't know, you know, but I'm hearing that we don't have the stuff in place.
We do have job descriptions, we just need to update that, right? They got to be a little.
I was in the union, that's something we did every contract. Cola was something we lived on, we didn't get it, we fought.
Well, can I make a suggestion? Can I nominate you to be part of the personnel committee to help with that? Since you have so much experience.
I don't have enough experience.
I'll take that as a no.
For the guys that worked for me for many years, but if you. You know, another man knows what they do, he knows how they work, their tasks, their capabilities, their education, he's got the right vision. He knows what they're capable of, that's nothing that we have to sign. Again, Jody, you pushed on HR, and those kind of things have to be determined by, you know. And again, he can, he knows exactly what they produce during the daytime, what they can produce, what they can't produce. They have the equipment to produce.
Another way of eating the elephant is to pare it out the cost. I had originally looked at a 17, 18 budget, and if you looked at the 23 line items that made up the revenues, 80% of our revenues came from the top five line items. If you looked at the expenditures for the 17, 18 budget, out of 18 line items, the top five were 80% of the expenditures. So maybe we don't need to go out and look at the entire budget, but maybe just pare it out and concentrate on the valuable few, rather than go through all this, and kind of get our feet wet and look at that stuff. Because some of this stuff falls right in, add the more taxes, it's number one on the revenues and capital expenditures, number one on the expenditures, so kind of all fits together.
I guess my question to council is, is this something we want to do as a council, or do you want to have a committee to help with? And that's a decision that whatever you decide, you're going to be bound by, because you can't change your mind in June, it'll be too late at that point in time, then we own it. So if we're here two or three nights a week working on budget, that's what it's going to be while we dig through this. I don't know what it's going to be to get through all of this stuff, but it sounds as if we get a binder full of stuff and are asked to pass it without enough time, that's, at least as far as I'm concerned, I accept, but I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Well, didn't you just say that they could give it to us in chunks, so that we don't get a binder at the last minute? And also couldn't we, when we got that information, I take it from your comment, that we could easily call you and need with you to understand it better? I don't quite get the purpose of an ad hoc committee to review it, so they can update us when we have the personnel right here to do that, and they can break it down to give it to us in smaller increments, so that we don't need to meet two, three nights a week to go over line by line. We could do it privately, and we can do it with everyone online, so.
As I said before, the, the idea is to save Mr. Zon's time, not spend it seven times over, but seven of us going in. over, but seven of us going in, because we cannot go in as a pair, we cannot go in as three of us, only going as individually.
I get that, but you're gonna have an ad hoc committee review every line by line that she gets paid to put together, then she's gonna have to explain it to the ad hoc committee, and then if they're gonna have to explain to, I mean, I just, I think an ad hoc committee would be a waste. I think we could get the information in increments and have a discussion.
Not looking for a vote tonight, looking forward to see if it's brought up next, maybe next month, if you vote against it, you know, I'll ask for a motion. If you don't want it, don't motion it, and that's fine, then we will do it just the way we said. And Sergeant Crozone, I tried, we'll begin six or seven of us, one at a time, and go over it six or seven times.
I don't care either way.
Okay, okay.
I'm not opposed to a committee. Whatever is easier for you guys, honestly.
Well, I guess we've, if you're proposing a committee, we, we need some kind of consensus if you wanna do it or don't wanna do it, because it's not something that's put on the agenda, you know, it's, it's, you know, just, because we might want to do it.
An ad hoc committee hasn't been done by legislature before.
Yeah. So, you know, if you don't like the synopsis of breaking it up so you understand it a little better, then, you know, that's, you know, that's whatever you wanna do, and.
Are we permitted to, I mean, it's not a binding vote?
No, no, it's not a vote.
Are we permitted to see where the interest is?
It's not a vote, it's just consensus.
Well, I mean, they can put it on the agenda for April, and they either vote for it or they don't.
Well, yeah, but you need a consensus here for us to, because we'll have to go to the attorney to create the resolution.
Melon, Melon, just a question to you, it seems like line items are an issue. Say you just made a copy of what the line items were for a month, would that help satisfy everybody then? Or are you, is that what you're looking for, the detailed line items in a month or a week? Just the pullout sections of what the expenditures are? Do you wanna pull out a week or a day?
No, not necessarily.
Just to see what they are?
To get to the bottom of some of it, to get to whether it's the best expenditure for our dollars, or we're spending money the way it should be spent, or paying the right salaries, or we're spending the right amount on different services, it's essential to look at this.
Maybe, maybe you're looking at a different program, maybe that's what you wanna do. Takes more data entry, of course, but maybe appropriate change would satisfy this, and you wouldn't need the ad hoc committee.
Mark, I previously, when I did the financial statements, the month of financial statements, I, I submitted a thirty-page package to everybody, and Wanda and John saw that, I don't know anybody, I don't think anybody currently sitting on this council ever saw the old package, but there was a desire for a simpler, easier to read, and so the whole financial package is completely different than what we're seeing today. But if you wanna see detail, I mean, that's basically what I was producing, I was producing a detailed line-by-line package per month, and I could easily produce that, I could produce it for a year, for, you know, this past year, or this year today, for you all to look at, if that's, if that makes it easier for you. I think the reason Lynn wanted to get away from it, is it's mundane, it's mind-motivating volume of data. But I'm not turning it down with a general ledger detail, but a line-by-line detail, I could give you that, and then if somebody goes through and says, okay, this account number here, this line item, what is that? We can hunch out and produce a report that gives you everything in that, if that's the level of detail you want, so, I mean, that's, that's easily done.
I guess the level I want as a CPA is one thing, and the level other people may want is something different, so I think we really need, I put my points out tonight, I think, you know, let's see where the interest, if any, is, and we can either move forward with it, or, yeah, I'll take all the detail you throw up, because I like detailing the numbers person, so, but I don't want you to do this just for me either, so I could meet with you individually and get that information and go through it, because as Glenn Aplick puts out, I mean, as the Aplick states, there's, most of the expenses are put in a few line items, there's, you know, there's very little we care about when it comes to pest control or something like that, it's not a big concern, you know, we know where the big expenses are, and some of them are just, we're not gonna do anything about it anyway. Debt service, what can we do about it? You know, you gotta pay a bill, so, but where's the council on this?
I would propose that we chunk it out, like you're saying, let's, let's divide it out, and get a little more visibility in it, I mean, rather than just having you come to us four months from now and say, here's the budget, we want to be, have a participator role in this thing, and say, well, why'd you do that? So that we have the visibility and the opportunity to send, to check things, rather than try to absorb all this four months from now, or five months from now, just be part of the process. In that way, at the end of the day, it's a, it's a consensus, it's a done deal.
Yeah, I, I think, I haven't got her in the, in the office to convince her of this, but I, she's kinda going like this, but.
That's a yes or a no at the same time?
Yeah, yes, no, you know, but in any case, I mean, I think we can do that. I came from that system, but when I got here, the system was different. You know, I came from the system of, you broke the capital, I had a, had a, you know, a work session about it, and the council was happy with it, where we were going with the project. If there was something that they thought we should do, then we added it or subtracted, you know, and that gives you a little more idea of that section than the operating budget a separate amount. Maybe we come up with somehow to split that a little bit, or maybe by department, I don't know, that's, that's possible too.
You know, the thing, the thing of it is, in the last year, all our progress made against the same words, well, it's gonna take quite a bit more to get it up to what it should be, walking paths, parks, we've been left to climb for so many years, so we're gonna have this, and until we find out how many employees, and whether we have to buy another, another piece of equipment to make all this, at least optimize what we have, and to be going further, this is gonna take a, a big task, and you're gonna, you're gonna be seeing changes, maybe in employment, maybe I can see an increase in cost, so.
But if we're not part of the budgets process, then we don't really ever know all those details, and that's where we can break this up, as we just talked about. Now, did you have anyone in particular in mind for the ad hoc committee, any residents that have shown an interest?
There is four people already that have approached us, three or, I think, sorry, three people that have approached us, certified accountant, huge financial experience, heavy financial experience, so, yeah, there's people out there who can do it. I got a letter from a person this morning, or two days ago, willing to help us with all the capital projects and committees, an engineer, an attorney, that we had met when we were out on the road, so, I mean, there's a lot of talent in our city, and they're willing to get involved if we want them to, if, but if not, I mean, he can be an advisor to me, you know, but he's, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be at the group's disposal, because, you know, and we.
Well, clearly, they can attend, they can attend all the work sessions, and be part of the conversation by means of being residents and, and, you know, approaching us with comments or questions, and, and the material we're going over, I'm sure can be made available to them as well. So if there are people you have in mind that would be helpful, I think it would be great to, that they attend the work sessions and just give us, if there's something important that we may be missing, they could give us that information and share with us their knowledge.
It's just a difference when they get three minutes to speak first, they have their own forum and their own.
Mayor, could I, could I make a comment?
Sure.
We've got, with the Bellevue Estates Island Telegraph project, I have a group of citizens that I meet with at least once a month, sometimes a little more, it depends if we need to, that I keep them up to date, and part of the thought process, yes, was that, that's my group, we don't have to have a committee, we don't have to have a public committee, we get the feedback to the residents that are affected, you know, and I don't have a problem working with people. And I think this, this little group that I've done with the, unless I've got two or three people here that live there, I hope they're giving me feedback, though they aren't. Well, that's unfortunate, because I tried another tactic by in emails, and didn't get that, but, you know, I'm meeting with this group, I actually met with them today to kinda show them, we're gonna be sending the letter out, to tell the residents that we're gonna get condued here in another week, week and a half, and.
Is that why we got new flags today?
Huh?
Is that why we got new flags today?
That I can't tell you, that, that could have been the consultant doing something, but.
I don't think anybody on those, on that particular, it's more of a voluntary, not an official committee.
Right.
I don't think it's their place to speak on behalf of the city, and that's probably why they're not doing it.
Okay, well.
And it's kind of not their place to speak on behalf of the whole, well, the entire state here, but, you know.
Well, they're, what they're doing is they're monitoring the progress of the project that's already been approved, but.
And they're also making decisions too, like the solar, that was a. No, that was a city vote, that wasn't, that was the council voting online, that wasn't. Right, but they brought that idea up, anyway, it's a pass. Anyway, my whole point is, I see where you're going, you're thinking, okay, we gotta just inform a whole group to meet with you and go with finance side of it to assist.
Yeah.
This wasn't to help you, this was to help us.
Well.
It's not us versus you, but it's, it's to help us.
It's to help you too.
Okay, but it's to help us understand.
Well, I think.
And I don't, and I'll be honest, I am CPA, I don't need their help, I can, I can tear through Melody's thirty-page budget, I'll get it, okay, but not everybody has that background, and that's what I'm trying to do this for, say, if you, you know, this is a way for those folks who maybe don't have the time, or, you know, if not a resident finance person, you know, you can go through this and have people who are give you that background. That was the thought, and if it's not needed, that's fine, and if, if people don't think it's a worthwhile expenditure of time, that's fine too. We do have the people who will do it, I'm confident we can get four people just advertising our city sources here. But if we don't have the interest to go forward, I really have two other major issues that I wanna go on to tonight, that I think are pretty important, so, can we get a yes or no, do you even wanna propose this next step? Because I don't wanna waste resources with the, with the city attorney drafting a resolution, we wanna do it ourselves, so.
I'm a no.
Okay.
I, I think if you pursue the formal ad hoc committee, it's gonna add a lot of complexity, because by the time we start spinning out the resolution, I mean, we're, we're already gonna be well into the budget process by the time we get those people stood up, and then they gotta get their feet on the ground, start running, do their research, and then report back. I propose that we just go with chunking it out, taking a more proactive view in it, I think everybody's got some expertise here, that we can look at it and sanity check things and ask, ask some intelligent questions, so I'm saying.
I like Jody's idea of maybe having them come and maybe help give us feedback.
Keep it informal, know some time long.
Give us like the Cliff Notes version for the non-CPA's, that would be nice, I like Cliff Notes.
I have a question for you, what software do we keep our accounting in?
QuickBooks.
QuickBooks, QuickBooks has a report writer in it, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, maybe everyone should sit down and sort of try to dream up what their ultimate report is, that would give them enough information to make them happy. I don't necessarily think that we need to micromanage the entire budget, but I wouldn't mind seeing a more of an executive-level report writer.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's very easy to give you a line item, if there's a particular, when you're going through and there's a particular line item that catches your eye, you go, I want the detail back, I can blow that up and give you every single check that we spent for that particular line item. And we can do it by line item, we could do it by vendor, you know, however you wanna look at it, it is very user-friendly as far as tweaking how you wanna see the report, so.
Can you provide us with a definition of what the chart of accounts are, what everything is, rather than just numbers? Is there a clear definition of what those?
Well, there, there's, there's a number, and right next to it is the names of the account. If you want a definition of that, you could get into the government chart of accounts, which is where that's.
Is the name pretty much self-explanatory?
It is, repairs and maintenance, you know, office supplies.
Usually, part of this orientation is supposed to be a budgetary presentation, how it works, how missions, and when can we expect that?
When can you expect what?
Well, I believe part of this orientation should include briefings by the city staff, such as public works, finance, code enforcement, and when can we expect that?
I, I wanna give that, you know, I, I think asking for it a day before was a little short.
Right.
And, you know, what we've traditionally done is have work sessions on the third Monday unless there was a conflict, and with the console on the first Monday, and a work session on the third Monday, and that was, I think everybody was fine with that on the last console, and that's reasonable, if the next one is, that would be, I mean, thank, who would that be, April twenty, something like that on calendar?
Would you mind if I made another suggestion? Rather than presenting something at the next meeting, I would, you know, I'd just like to see the chart of accounts, and not necessarily, I don't even need to see the numbers, I'd like to know what they all are, so, we all have our emails now, did everyone get their email address this week? You guys? Okay, so, you know, why not email us a PDF with that information?
I would be happy to.
Very simple stuff, baby steps.
Yeah.
So that we can look at this and go, okay, now that I know where all of our, what all of our account numbers are, and what these do, and how we're spending our money, and how we're bringing money in, then maybe a little bit later, we get the next baby step, whereas, okay, now here's where money's coming in and going out this week, or this month, or something like that, so that now, now that I've got the list and I've looked at that, now I can start looking, this is not something we're just gonna absorb instantly, it's not gonna happen, and I've said it in meeting after meeting concerning finances, budgets, things like that, it's just too much. We have a method of getting this information out, and just like communicating with the citizens, we gotta communicate amongst ourselves a little better also, so, anything you can give us, it's up to us to read, anything that's, you know, I'm not saying I'm gonna tell you how to do it, but if you think there's something out there that will help us, please give us some information, something to start with, and, and we'll, you know, then that'll, that'll prompt questions from us, that, you know, we'll have more information to, to go back to you with intelligent questions, instead of just a blanket, you know, about what's going on.
Well, just to tell you that third Wednesday would be the fifteenth of April, that.
Thursday.
Wednesday, or Monday, third Monday.
Monday, Monday, I'm confusing me, it's difficult.
We've had a long, repetitive rotation.
It doesn't, I'm not worried about myself, I mean, I, the other, you know.
What we'll do is give you, last year, Patty, myself, and we had things that were accomplished, and then we had a kind of a goals list, and each one of us, and then I'll do, create the same thing, and then we had items that we thought were stagnant, something that kinda didn't, well, I think at the time, I'll use the streetlights was a good example, we went many months trying to resolve what we were gonna do with streetlights, so, that was something that was kinda stagnant, but throw over that one now, and we moved on down the street, so, we would redo that for this council, so you kinda understand what part of the project is, and part of the strategic plan is gonna be part of those goals, you know, that's, that's gonna be part of that. But actually, I looked at them the other day, and I know I met with Jody about something else.
Pulled them all out.
And I pulled them all out, and I said, you know, I went through all this, and there was a, I had a big list.
You had a big list, yeah.
And the only thing that was left on there was a stormwater feed.
Which I still made a note here, we didn't talk about that.
That, you know, I brought up two, a couple times anyway, and that's something that, you know, I'll put on there for the. you know, I'll put on there for the next year, you know. Do we want to do that? Because that'll help us with funding our stormwater.
Can we just put that on the agenda and talk about it? Because I know it's come up a couple of times, and since we're entering the budget season, it would be a good time to, to talk about that, and it would be nice to know if the rest...
So if, if that's good with the council, we'll, we'll plan on the 15th of having a work session. And if there's anything that you want, put on that work session agenda personally, just let us know, we'll add it, and we always put agenda. And something that we are going to start, that I haven't told Patty yet, but I'll tell her right now. We try to get the agenda, the regular council meeting agenda out to you by the Wednesday. The charter administration says something about, it has to be by, stuff for the agenda has to be new to us by 4:30 on Wednesday. Well, we've tried to get it out a day earlier, so if you, I'm kind of telling you now, if you have something that you would like put on the agenda for the upcoming agenda, please get it to us by Tuesday of the week before the meeting. And I'll have Patty send an email last out, maybe on Friday before the, this reminder, just ask you, do you have any? Because we don't have any problem putting things on the agenda, that's, that's easy. But, so if that helps too.
Thank you for telling any council members that, because that would never share it with any of us.
What?
So that you could add things to the agenda, it was always just, you know, that was...
Yeah, but anytime...
Council committee.
Yeah, well, a few council members did.
Yeah, that's good, because you're now institutionalizing the process. A call for agenda items, so everybody gets a reminder.
Yeah, if you don't have anything, that's fine. You bring the popcorn and...
Let's move to something that might want to be on the next agenda.
Okay.
I asked you for all of our contracts here, and you gave us a page here with key contracts. Some of these contracts actually go along, go about our terms here, so we don't even have to worry about them. But there are three that catch my eye here. There's three ongoing contracts from Dwell Associates Engineering Services, which is an ongoing contract, the Engineering Service Groups, which is engineering permit and review services, which is an ongoing contract, and Paul Marino City Attorney, which is an ongoing contract. Question is, is when have these been, if in recent memory, have they been bid out, have they been looked at, or RFQed?
They, they were RFQed, I believe it was 2014, 15, so they're, they're about five years old. Now, the city attorneys know that they haven't, because that's pretty much an ongoing contract. Paul's been here...
1998.
Okay, so...
So from 1998, we've never taken another look?
I typically, I will tell you typically, in most cities, the city attorney doesn't change unless the city council decides that they want to change it, the city attorney, and then an RFQ is put out. They don't typically go out for an RFQ unless they're wanting to change their city attorney.
We haven't even done it in this century. Okay. Let me ask the council, what do you want to do? You know, the other one you said, 2014 for the engineering?
Yeah, the, the engineering services is a person. Pinellas County used to do all our site review and stuff about five years ago, and rightly so, because they really missed a few things over prior years, you know, setbacks, things of that nature. So that gentleman, Larry Flutie, does our site plan reviews, like when Dave put in his variants, and Jody's husband put in their variants, they had to be reviewed because it, it's part of the process, you have to be told a bill first before you can ask for a variant. So that's what he does. Cardinal does the, we do internally the work, the inspections and things that we need to do for MBDS, which is the pollution discharge system, that we're required to do, if there's a permit for that, that's pretty much all Cardinal does. And when I go out and ask for services from these engineering firms, and I'll give you an example, First Street, I went out and asked, each one of them to give me a cost. Well, Cardinal came back with a cost of somewhere, it was almost $90,000 to do the engineering work. Dwell and Associates came back with a cost somewhere around 40. And we got a good product from Engineering Services Group, which came back with a cost of $30,000. So I don't just say, oh, I'm going to give you this work because you give me a price. Dwell, for the most part, what they've done for us recently, they did Second Street because they were the lowest contract cost. But they do surveying for us, like they just did a survey on Third through Fifth Street for that engineering project that we're doing there. So that's kind of what they do, but when we have big projects, it's been my, you know, my idea that I'm not going to take your price that you're just going to give me and say you get it. Now, I'm not going to say that didn't happen in the past, and Melody laughs about that, she knows that.
Cut, 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 cut.
Yeah, so...
Every big...
Yeah, so, but we don't have a, you know, we're not a big enough city to have, you know, an engineer on staff, so we have to do it this way. The other things that the sheriff comes up here, they're September.
I just want to focus on the ones that are ongoing, yeah, let's just talk about that, because that's what we can do something about right now.
Can I just ask one first question? On the engineering services, then basically what you've done is you've, you have approved engineers that you'll go get bid, bid numbers from.
Right, right.
So, so potentially we could add to this and have another two or three engineers on there that you could bid projects to on individual basis.
Yeah, I could put an RFQ out and, you know, this, well, we'd do it sometime during the summer, then ask for additional engineering firms to...
I know a very good one that probably would blow your socks off on price.
Now, isn't there a, a price threshold where you're required to go to these? 12,000, is that the number that I recall?
Is it 20? I think it's 20.
What I'm saying is you have these ongoing contracts...
Well, no, not once you get these, no. I have to bring them to the city council. Once you do an RFP and hire someone for engineering services, you, you've met that threshold of the Consultants Competitive Act. After that point in time, you know, I bring them to the council. I, I don't know, I can't tell you, were they brought to the council before when they hired the engineers? Do you know?
Depends on what...
What it was.
What it was, and that was our last warm-up, we just thought I would look at the other for...
Okay, well, I have a different philosophy. I'm not going to spend any more than my threshold will allow me, you know, for the city manager with a contract. I'd much rather bring it to the city council and say, you're okay with this, as opposed to me just saying, oh, I got an engineering contract, I can go spend whatever it is.
So it's all project-specific?
Yes.
And we approve the projects as you spend the budget, so...
Yeah, so it's budget-related.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I bring it back to you, even though it's budgeted, I...
You still ask.
I still ask.
I know.
So the question, I guess, is, are we going out for full RFQs on these three? Are we going out for, as Jody suggested, maybe some additional engineering services? And then what about the city attorney for an RFQ or whatnot?
Well, that's, that's up to the city council.
So I'm asking, I think we need to know if we're going to speak in, because this is our attorney, and it's also our engineers, but it sounds like engineering, you have some competitive...
Yeah, competitive consultant, yeah.
I think it's good, I think it's a good idea to take any, any potential contract out to an RFQ, so I'm in support of any, anyone that, you know, these two, these three ongoing, and then potentially getting additional, I agree.
But we'll do that in the summer timeframe, because the, the only one that really expires right now, and that's actually in the contract, is the MBDS.
Saying engineering for the summer, who's saying county attorney, I don't know, I'm waiting for the summer for the attorney.
No, no, I'm talking the engineering.
Oh, okay, engineering for the summer?
Yeah.
County attorney? Yeah, let's see, yes or no?
All three.
All three. So you want to do all three now, or we want to wait till the summer? Lynn's saying wait till the summer, so...
Well, no, the engineering, the, the one that has an expiration date, I'd rather...
Yeah, don't reach any contracts, no, no.
No, you don't want to do that.
No, 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 I'm not advocating that. If there's a set date, you stay, we stay with that. I'm going ongoing figuring you could go out now on them, so if you can go out, we're talking about the ones you can go out now, which would be Dwell, Engineering Group, and Marino.
Yeah, well, Marino is, is a separate issue. What I'm talking about, if we're going to go out for engineering services, because that's how all these were done, why they had a, no expiration date, I can't tell you that, I inherited them, okay? So what I'm saying is if we're going to go out, we should plan it to go out with, because all of these were done in the same timeframe, all three of them. They were all done in, I want to say, well, it had to be November of 14. And the only one that had a timeline on it was the Cardinal contract. So what I'm saying to you is, we'll just go out for engineering services, let's see, November, so, probably sometime in July, we'll go out for an RFQ. I'll ask you for permission to do it, probably at the June meeting, and then send it out.
Anybody with it?
Now, the city...
Let's do one at a time. Everybody's okay with the engineering, with Lynn's proposal, or you want to do it immediately? If you have that option. Lynn's recommending that we do it in the summertime, sounds good to me.
Well, then you can get them all, that's what I'm saying.
Right, no, I, I think you're right. Yeah, I think we all agree, right? So we're in agreement on the engineering, we do it in July, you come back, what, in June or July, whatever you think, that's all three of them. Paul Marino now is, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I agree with that, we're in July.
Okay.
Now, Paul, that's, that's, that's really up to you guys, I think the council has to have some type of discussion at a meeting to say...
No, it'll be a vote, I'm just, before we, you know, this is, this is a work session where we can talk about it informally, if there's, again, if there's no interest, it won't even be moved for a motion next time. But is this something that there's interest on? If not, you know, there's no interest in the finance committee, we're not going to move for a motion. If there's no interest on this, we don't move for a motion.
Have we ever had any issues with any of the services? I mean, you know, that would be another...
Well, I can, well, I guess I can tell you more than the last couple years, because, you know, I've served on the city council for a time. Paul's been very good to the city, he's been very cost-conscious, he hasn't tried to wring us, and I will tell you this, if you go out to an RFP, you are going to pay significantly more than you are paying now. I know that we haven't had any lawsuits against him, he's been able to, you know, if someone's tried, he's been able to abate that. So that's what I can tell you at this point. I know that he's using Jackie a little more, and I will tell you, I think Jackie's very, very capable of doing a good job, and she's been very helpful, you know, throughout the co, co-review committee she was very helpful with, she, she spent a lot of time on that. So, you know, it's really up to the city council what they want to do, but that's a discussion that the council has to have, more than a work session, same thing.
Oh, great, I noticed that's coming for a vote. In answer to Councilwoman Swope's question...
Oh, Mrs. Swope.
Mrs., okay, Mrs.
Well, I'm just saying Swope, not Swoon.
Swope, okay, Swope. In answer to your question, I have significant issues with the services, and I will not put this out in public. There are multiple laws that we have on our books that I believe as an attorney are presently unconstitutional. It's not my feeling, it's other people's feelings. City could be looking at significant lawsuits, we're going to talk about one on one right now, it's not a law actually, it's just our website, or maybe some of our communications, but there's stuff out there that aligns, and I purposely did not put this stuff out there because I don't want to give a roadmap to somebody to sue us. So I have some issues with it, and, you know, so is it worth looking at? My vote is yes, it's worth looking at. It doesn't mean you're not going to select the same person that you got, so he's not precluded from bidding, he's also not expected to bid, so...
Mayor, maybe, maybe what you should do is schedule a appointment with Paul and have, have a discussion and voice your concerns, and then bring those concerns back to the council. I mean, I think that might be a, a good solution, unless others have concerns, and maybe they should meet with them individually to tell them.
I won't, I won't limit just to Paul Marino, I'm just not a fan of open-ended contracts, and I, I see no problem with recompeting these, and if they, if these people resubmit and they come up on top, those are the people you use. I, there's no problem. I just have a problem with open-ended contracts. They should come up with a review, and especially, I understand that it's a charred position and it serves at the pleasure of the council, but at the same time, there's never any evaluation process ever, and how do you document or keep track of that kind of performance, or ever, you know, it comes up the discussion, so that's an issue.
Issue.
And Paul Marino's specific issue is, he's getting older, and approaching retirement age, and my sense is that he's started to back out of the city attorney position, and I think you're going to start seeing more and more Jackie filling in. So the question is, is who did we hire? Did we hire Paul Marino, or did we hire Jackie Spoeder? I think if you look at the contract, it's Paul Marino Esquire, not Paul Marino Law Firm.
It, it's probably a law firm, I would imagine, the business staff, but, you know, I can look at that. I mean, I can send you a copy of the contract.
Yeah, no, I'd ask that, yeah, I'd want a copy of the contract. Other council members? I think that we owe it to the people to at least say that we looked into it, and if we do, if we do identify Mr. Marino as the best choice for the city, at least we gave others a chance to, to compete in your contract. Now, the interest that you raised, my interest in the things you found, so maybe a review of certain things by, not you, but somebody else, and then come back and report saying, hey, another law firm has found this, and I've seen it, it brought to their attention, if you want to do that also, then we can make a better decision based on what your findings are, what someone else's findings are, you know. I'll take that charge, but I need a law firm, it's not going to be my firm, so...
And, and that aside, I think back to, you know, my, just like I said with the engineering firms, I don't think anyone should be given an open-ended contract, it makes them too comfortable, they think they have no competition, they believe they're part of the council, there's too many just ongoing potential problems that giving someone an open-ended contract, we're not serving the residents the way we should.
Especially when everybody's sitting right up there, everything, where all of us who are facing the law firm have to face the election, and that's the one person who does it.
Right.
So I think what I'm hearing...
I was going to say, another related issue to that is, if that contract is 20 years old, our requirements may have changed in those 20 years, so an RFQ gives us a chance to revisit to see if maybe our requirements have changed in air floor.
Yeah, I'm not saying I can't put an RFQ together, that's, that's immaterial.
That's, what I'm hearing, I think is...
I think what I, you know, and I would suggest to you, Mayor, that you had that conversation, and then bring that back to the city council, which you could do.
I could, I'd like to get this on the agenda though, as soon as possible, so let's get this on the agenda if we could, for a vote, I mean, it'll be, you know, obviously this is not binding, I'm sorry, I see a hand out, one second, let me, this, I'd like to get this out for... One second, let me, I'd like to get this out for a vote to see if we have, you know, this is not binding what we're doing tonight, so we have to get, have to come up with a motion, has to be seconded, it has to be approved by the majority. We have one person who was edging possibly to saying no, so we have to see where the council stands on this. If the council stands on it, then you're going out for the RFQ. I'm more than, in the meantime, I would be more than happy, because this is a one month or so longer process, I would be more than happy to sit down with him as a professional, not representing the city, but as an attorney and experienced one in constitutional law, to tell you where I think you have some glaring problems. I'm not willing to do this on the record for obvious reasons, because somebody's going to pick that record up and sue us with it, so...
On the record, yeah, you're going to be...
Understood, but I'm not saying where the issues are, so go find them.
So is the consensus for me, which that's not going to happen next week, to, you know, to create an RFQ, to ask for, you know, ask for qualifications for a city attorney? Is that the consensus?
That would be a resolution right now, then an RFQ comes from the resolution.
No, there's no resolution. No, I didn't, what will happen is, prepare an RFQ, I'll bring it to the council and say, ask for authorization, which will probably be the main meeting when I ask for that authorization. Then it'll go out, it'll be out for X amount of days, come back, we'll somehow shortlist it, and then we'll bring it to the city council.
Do we need a vote on that now, tonight?
No, you don't need a vote, I just need a...
Just an authorization?
Consensus.
A consensus, yes.
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays. Nays? No, but pass. So everybody's fine. And I'm sorry, there was a citizen comment? Is he covered?
I just wanted to chime in and say that, that any time going with your strategic plans, those big best practices, best practices should be putting this rule out for bid at least every couple of years. That's what the county does, following the county's procedures. That's what they do every couple of years, is they put everything out for bid, even if you go back with the existing people you have, okay? It keeps the current contracts that you have with these people, keeps those people in check. So it makes them, so it's kind of a check and balance all the time. And I think that would be best practice.
Sure, good. Thank you. Okay. I have one other topic, I know this is going to be me, but this is my agenda for tonight here. We've got an issue, Scott, Martha, Duncan, and I. We have an issue, then you brought this up to council a couple of months ago. June and I, we were out at Suncoast League of Cities last month, it was a big hot topic. Actually, several cities pulled down their websites because there's a cottage industry with attorneys, those darn attorneys, they go out and they find somebody who might have some type of a disability, usually it's a hearing or vision problem, and then they go to your website or they go to your documents that you had, it could be your Twitter feeds or Facebook page, whatever you have as a city. And Lynn, correct me if I'm saying it is wrong, and they'll basically say, well, it's not ADA compliant. They've somehow managed to extend the American Disability Act to include websites, even though it was really intended to be places of public accommodation, courts have now started to say, are websites a place of a public accommodation? Anyway, I had an article that I got today, it was from the Daytona Beach, and fifteen thousand dollars later they settled with the situation. Lynn just mentioned to me, I believe Bel Air Shore has a problem.
Yeah, Bel Air Shore, this was an email from Barr, someone requesting the screen reader capabilities on their website, so, and this happened, Indian Shores, I know that, but it's Indian Shores, it's Patty's sister, Bonnie, and so what they've done is take all the minutes, the agendas and written, you know, documents, they've just taken them down until we get this sorted out, because they could, that's a good example. It was a Florida League of Cities magazine, right by his mayor. It was in that also. And there is something that I probably will go to in Lakeland, it's a city manager's thing on this ADA with some legal consulting, I guess, or a big presentation in mid-April. But I'm concerned...
I'm very concerned. We have cards from people, we, you know, I wasn't mayor at the time, I was a candidate and they didn't really want to spend a ton of time with me, but we did get cards from people, they're willing to help in these other cities, but yes, they pulled their sites down in some cases. As the person who gets served with process now, I don't want that knock on my door with somebody saying, here's your legal papers, because if it's hidden in Bel Air Shore, you know it's coming to your next. And before we start blowing fifteen thousand dollar bills, I don't even know if we've looked into this, I don't know what it will take to fix it, but I guess I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Well, some of the odds and ends things, we've tried. I did talk to the guy that does our videotaping and so did Indian Rocks, because he does it there. He wanted about four hundred dollars a month to do closed captioning, but YouTube has a thing, but if you've seen the meetings, he's done it for us, but you may, people say words differently. They're like, you know, somebody from maybe Boston says haas and I say horse. So it comes across different and maybe it came out as house on the video, but Victor has started that and that's not costing us anything. If we wanted more clarity to it, then it's going to cost us something. But my, most of the cases have either been the closed captioning or these minutes, agendas and things of that nature, because we don't have that capability, so...
So besides the video, the closed captioning, what is it, the visual side of things?
Could they ask for a URL? I mean, they could ask for, you know, an audit or something.
How do you fix a visual ADA issue on the internet?
I just looked it up, there's screen readers.
Screen readers, yeah, something like that.
Oh, okay.
Sort of read it to you.
So it's in the audio?
Yeah, you got to do some things and, you know, I'm not a...
I don't even know what it takes to fix it, but I just know I don't think we're there and...
You know what, I'll be more than happy to take a look at this. I do this all the time and it's just technology.
Maybe you and I, together, we can figure it out. But what I'm more concerned about is, what's the council's thought? Do we take these things off there until we get this fixed? Because we don't want, you know...
Can you ask for a protective or something? So a resident calls in and wants to view the minutes?
You can't do that.
Florida except access for public documents. I think the other cities hold it down until they got it fixed. And I appreciate Davey looking into it, but it sounds like, you know, this is not an overnight fix, this isn't like, you know, OG, you make a setting...
No, it's not going to happen tomorrow.
No, this may cost some money and this may take some time and I, I'm just telling you, what we heard at Suncoast was, they pulled it down, we will be happy, June had mentioned the issue, we'd be happy to call a few people, or if not, I'd just volunteer to call a few people, but we have some cards, I mean, but what I was hearing was, we pulled it down until we got it fixed and that may be what we have to do.
So what's the consensus?
I think we need to pull it down.
You know, we'll still have, you know, the council meeting is at six o'clock on Monday, but the agenda won't be there. But maybe we could do something if you...
If you want to copy, contact.
Contact us and then email it to you.
Or they're available for pickup at the city hall.
Now, as far as YouTube goes, you're looking at that, because I think as soon as you put something on YouTube, you don't own it anymore. So therefore, you're no longer responsible for it.
And that may be, I'm just, you know, the other, the cities are, and I'm talking to locals close by here, they're nervous about this, because to put closed captioning on your video is not a cheap thing to do.
Although since then we spoke with, we're all local, it was Clearwater, it was Largo, it was people like this, they were getting hit, either they got hit or they know someone who got hit with this.
And they got big staffs that could take care of it.
Yeah, they're big cities. And about fifteen thousand dollars is a lot to us, that buys a lot of those checkpiles and a lot of the other stuff, so, you know, I think we have consensus that it's safe and that's everything, right?
Okay. Also, just, it's probably not near as serious, but all of these websites, you may have noticed that everyone has a cookie policy. One day you log on to a site you've been to for years and now there's an okay button up there where you have to accept their terms. That's something that's supposed to be on every website period.
Yeah, I'll talk to our board about that.
Okay. And there's a, what is it, acceptable usage and a privacy policy, and they both need to be on there also.
A privacy policy.
Yep. It's basically saying that if we collect anything about you on our website, it's ours.
Yeah, and I'll talk to Digital here, because that's who hosts our website previously. It was kind of hazardly done in-house.
Is there no get out of jail disclaimer you can put under like, hey, we're trying to catch up with technology in the interim, you know, you accept the fact that we don't have this technology?
I apologize in advance, Joe, but as long as there are attorneys, there's going to be a way.
You know, it's not the attorney who gets the money though, it's somebody else on the other side. Lynn hit it before, I said it's a cottage industry, it's a cottage, there's people who go around and it's literally legal shakedown and, you know, it's, again, we have every compassion for people who have a true disability, but these people max it out and this is a way of making money.
They do this a lot in Florida. They, a few years ago, they came up to city staff and asked them for records, a guy working in the park cutting grass, you know, so we had to give those guys cards to send them to the city clerk, because one of the beach communities here got nailed for twenty-five hundred bucks because some guy told him something that...
He didn't know what's dumb.
Didn't know what he was telling him.
The good news is though, that I read Florida League of Cities yesterday is trying to pass legislation that will stop these nuisance lawsuits. So the state is trying to, some of the lawyers were trying to counteract that, and if that passes, then all of the city will report it.
I wouldn't even say legally it's a nuisance lawsuit, this is something that, it's been an extension that ADA, when the ADA law was written, it was really dealt with buildings like this to make sure it's real, it's fair, accessible, stuff like that. The internet wasn't even around, this stuff didn't even exist, so now they're taking it and they're taking a law that never entered the application, applying it to technology that didn't even exist at the time, and courts are just applying it however they want, so unfortunately it looks like it's here. Folks, do we have, I have spoken more than enough tonight, anybody else have some agenda items over here? I know we normally go person to person, but anybody have something? You guys tired?
I'm trying to make a motion that we can close out.
You have a motion, Joe?
Yes.
Also moved. Thank you.